Board meeting, call this meeting to order. We have a roll call, please, Ms. Tymary.
Mr. Marion?
Here.
Mr. Patz?
Present.
President Affell?
Present.
I understand that Member Dice will not be here and we are expecting Member Ash.
Okay, well hopefully she'll roll in shortly. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, good evening. We would like to go ahead and remove one item from the agenda. I'm looking for it here, Ms. Tymary, where's that item? Yeah, I'm trying, is it under?
I six, isn't it?
Oh, next page, yep, thank you very much. I six is the item we'd like to remove for tonight.
Approval of change order for swimming pool improvement. Any objections to that change?
Are you removing it?
From tonight's agenda, it's being removed. That's accepted by acclamation, any other proposed changes?
No.
No.
Pledge of allegiance. Member? Member Ash is here. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, this is the part of the agenda for public comment on items that are not on our agenda and within the jurisdiction of the board. Do we have any public comment tonight? Yes, and if you'd like, introduce yourself if you'd like.
Hello, my name's Tom Salvatore, I'm the band teacher, music teacher at Emory Secondary School. And I first want to thank, we had a great event last Wednesday. It was amazing, I want to thank Dr. Rubio for attending. Is this a little hot? No. I want to thank Dr. Rubio for attending and also Mr. Affell and everybody else who attended because our students did a fabulous job. I just want to, taking my time real fast, talk about some concerns that, I should also mention I'm the union rep, the site union rep at, on the high school. I just want to take real fast, talk about some concerns that we have of our decline in enrollment and the advertisement that we need to do. One of the things that we're worried about is that currently we only have 20 students registered, that we understand registered for kindergarten, where in the past we've had a waiting list, there's no waiting list. I was at the elementary school recently and I didn't see a banner for registration outside. I'm wondering if information has been sent to the daycares or preschools, just wondering about that process. I'm also concerned that when I go past the new site, the, under construction, that there's no banners, and there's no banners, there's nothing that says, oh, a school is coming, here it comes, all right, you know, there's nothing exciting about that. And the ECCL, there's something, this is a personal thing, nowhere in ECCL does it say "school." And so, I don't know, I'm just, we're a school, I feel we should be letting people know that we're a school. Yeah, and I know at the high school, we haven't had any leader, meetings from leadership and ILT hasn't had any talk about improving daily attendance through our, you know, having kids coming in on time. We haven't addressed that as a staff and our leadership hasn't led that. And we're also concerned that, I know at the high school, there's issues going on with counseling and after-school and other things, and we're afraid that that's going to affect the community where people coming in if we make strong changes to counseling, if we make drastic changes to other things. Well, I should say negative, negative changes because we want these programs to be strong to attract students. And we're just looking for your leadership and your help to do this. I also want to end that, I know that people have said negative things about the high school, and I just want to ask you that the next time someone says something negative about the high school, that you tell them that they need to listen to our bands, because our band is really, really good. And when you hear them play and you see how proud they are and you see the boys wearing ties and you hear how strong they are, the learning is on display and anybody who hears them has to think, wow, they sound great, they must go to a really good school. So, any, if anybody says something negative about the school, I need you to tell them, listen to our band. So, I want to-
You're bringing this up?
Yeah, I understand. So, I just want to thank you, I know there's things we need to do to attract people to our amazing school and we're just hoping that leadership can guide us there.
Thank you, Mr. Salvatore. And thank you for your, your band leadership.
Good evening. My name's Mark Davis, I'm a teacher at the high school, I'm also ETA Vice President. Tonight I want to just follow up a little bit what Tom said in that last night, I got a phone call from a former student who is now, he went through, had him as a freshman, took him through four years, went to Cal, UCLA School of Law, he's now a federal prosecutor in LA. Site that, this is what Emory turns out, same classroom, same teachers, same curriculum, success story. So, I don't want to hear all the negative stuff about the high school either. We have our success stories. I do want to talk about something that, I intended to talk to you about something totally different until late this afternoon. And what came to my mind is the lack of morale that is going through both sites. That teachers are working hard, they feel like they're being investigated, they feel intimidated, they feel like there's going to be retaliation, they are worried, they are really kind of disturbed, okay? I don't like finding out that somebody's looking on, on attendance database to see what time I checked in and to tell somebody else about it. But that's what I was told, that Dr. Rubio knew exactly what time I was on and, you know, told someone that I had not provided a substitute that day, which I did. So, we're very concerned about the way in which things are happening to staff, there seems to be such a small district that we should be able to communicate, we are not that big, we should be able to pick up a phone. I would hope that the superintendent would find it in his time, if he can check up on ESOP, he can pick up the phone and call a teacher, call a staff member and ask them, hey, what is this I hear? And so we get a real human interaction and we don't end up where we are tonight. I, that's, 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 I'm just, I hope the board will, will look into this, we don't have the authority to do that, but I would, we had high hopes when Dr. Rubio came here, we want to change, we believed that he was going to build a relationship with teachers, that it was going to be a positive movement. Right now intimidation, fears, paranoia is filled that gap.
You're out of time.
And it's an easy repair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Lauren LaPlante, school psychologist and also ETA treasurer. I wanted to speak to some similar concerns with staff morale. As, in the position that I'm in, I get the opportunity to work at both school sites, so I hear a lot from staff and being the district psychologist, I get to hear an extra lot about how people feel. And it seems that we're in an era where relationships are no longer the priority. And it also seems that there's a correlation between impaired relationships and increased spending on district leadership fees. So, we've figured out that this year the district's already spent $51,000 more in legal fees compared to last year. And at a time where we're talking about cutting essential programs related to counseling, positive youth development and other programs, it's really discouraging to know that legal fees are increasing at the same time. And I don't recall a time in the recent past where this has been the case. So, I just want to put it out there that we had a principle of creating a sense of family and that does not seem to be the case.
Hi, my name is Ray Corona, I'm currently a student at Emory High School, I'm a junior. I'm just speaking on behalf of the counselor position being removed from Emory High School. I know that, from, from what I've heard on information about it, it's not a major position that we need, but I like to say that it is something that we really need at Emory High School specifically. The counselor at Emory High School is a really great counselor, not only because we've built relationships with that counselor, thank you, but because that counselor, the counselor position in general, it provides us with information that we can't access or information that we don't know how to access specifically such as scholarships. I actually had a college class on counseling with the counselor at my high school that talked to me about scholarships, to talk to me about FAFSA, to talk to me about financial aid, I can go on, but this is information that I specifically didn't know, simply because I just didn't know the information. And knowing the information coming from my counselor and building this relationship over years, like I've known this counselor since I've been in the seventh grade before, the counselor was actually even a counselor, I had him as a math teacher, I've built relationship with him, I can trust on his word that if he tells me to go to Berkeley City College and fill out an application or go to a certain specific area to do a certain thing, I can trust and know, like, you know, I can trust this person, like, I already know, he knows a lot about, he knows about what he's doing. And so, I just really would like to say that, again, the relationship, it's a major need and the counseling position is definitely something you guys should think about twice because it's affecting the students, if you take it out of the program, it will affect us in a very negative way. And this is just me talking to my students who are in my classroom and they've said that it will affect them. Many of them have even said that they're willing to go to a different school simply because the counselor position is being removed. And that's just to go, that's to show you that this counselor position isn't just something that you're taking out of the school and it's not going to affect no one, it will affect a lot of us, including myself. And so, just like, thank you for that.
Hi, I'm Diana Sharif, I'm a junior at Emory and I came here, I've come to, I've come in this district, I've been in this district since the fourth grade and I've never really objected to anything, any decisions that have been made until I heard about this counselor position being removed from Emory. I've known Mr. Patterson since the seventh grade and he is one of the very few adults at Emory that has stuck it out with us. He is a support to many of the students, both academically and emotionally. As, at Emory, we pride ourselves in, in creating a sense of family, but we can't do that if we've had three different principals every year and we can't do that if we're constantly taking away staff and faculty. Students at Emory don't, many students at Emory don't have stable adult figures in their lives, so we, we take a lot of, we consider the adults at Emory very important to us and we go to them for help a lot, Mr. Patterson especially. Many of us have turned to Patterson because he not only knows what he's doing like others have said, but he knows how to connect with us. The whole school knows that they can turn to him in times of need and he does all this outside of his job as a counselor. He's proven to us that we have people at Emory that care about us and that will go out their way to make us feel comfortable. A lot of students at Emory, including myself, are first generation high school graduates and without Mr. Patterson, we wouldn't know half of the stuff we know now. And he's gone out his way to teach a class for us and to inform us about all the stuff like financial aid and how to, and which colleges are the best for us. And we can't have an intern, a part-time intern come in with no knowledge of our hopes and desires, think they can do the job that he had, that he's done for the past five or six years with as much dedication.
Hi. My name is Keely Wright and I've been at Emory Unified School District ever since I was in kindergarten and I would like to talk about the position as a counselor. Mr. Patterson has widely helped me ever since I was attending high school at Emory. I trust his word very hardly and I believe if you get rid of this program, you're not only hurting Emory, you're actually hurting the class of 2016 and the future. So, I believe he should stay because he went beyond his way just to help all of us. I've been taking college classes at Laney for a year now and it's been helping me like crazy. And it's making it look good on my, not only my transcript, but every person who takes a college class at Laney with the help of Mr. Patterson. And I also want to like to talk about the position Ms. Brenda is, I guess, in, I don't really know her name for it, but without her, she helped a lot too for not only our class, but the classes before us and the classes that's coming after us. I feel like, speaking on behalf of class of 2016, we've worked so hard and for us getting rid of her is potentially not having us a prom or a senior ski trip or a grad night. And I worked too hard for not enjoying my one little week of fun and I think getting rid of her and Mr. Patterson is a very big mistake and y'all should really reconsider about it and have them stay. And that's all I got to say.
Hello, I'm Mr. Weiner, I'm a teacher at Emory Secondary School for the last eight years, the advanced math program. I was also the summer school site administrator. I also run the SSTs and 504s at Emory Secondary School, helping with the administration. I am also the leader of the Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Team and a cost team member, so I am, oh, also the senior advisor. I do a lot at the school currently and for the past eight years. I substitute when the principal is out as the principal for the high school and once for the elementary school. One thing I have to say is that we are massively understaffed at the high school. As part of the Positive Behavior Intervention Program, we're trying to figure out how to keep discipline and behavior in the school under control and we don't have the staff to monitor our lunches, we don't have staff to run detentions, we have no staff available to handle discipline when the security guard's out or whenever anyone else is out. Most of our discipline is handled by our security guard, by our secretaries and by our counselor. So, without them and as we lose more and more staff, we have less administration on campus. Next year it looks like we're going to have one admin on campus, I will not be fulfilling the role as admin next year. And this year when I subbed for admin, I was subbing another class as a teacher, running the office since all the office staff was out, acting as the security guard guarding the front door and being the principal, all at the same time. And that is massively illegal. There is major problems and major concerns when we have rooms being monitored by security guards who do not have sub credentials, that's illegal, you need admin on staff, you need a counselor on staff who can fill in for these roles. When I run SST meetings and I don't have an admin on site and the counselor's not there, that's a problem. And half the meetings I run, we have to tell the parents, I'm sorry, Emory does not have the tools necessary to service your kid at this point. We don't have an after-school program, we don't have tutoring, there's a lot of services lacking and you want to cut positions at this point, I don't know how you're going to be servicing the class of 2016 and any following class without these positions.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Acosta, I am an alumni who graduated last year from Emory High School. And I can definitely tell you that the fears Diana, Ray and Keely presented to you about not having a counselor in the upcoming year are very much true. Last year, as it was, having a counselor, he was very overwhelmed with all the stuff he had to do. If, I don't know how many of you guys are familiar with the Common App and the application for the, for the UCs, but there is a section where the counselor himself has to fill out, where you input the counselor's email and he gets a link to fill out that portion for every single student filling the application. And you have about 60 students and one man filling all those applications out. So, that's definitely not enough, not enough as it was and as I, when I heard that the counter position was going to be removed, I was not so much shocked seeing as, how understaffed we were last year, but just in denial that such an important position for all of the students within the school was going to be removed.
All right. My name is CJ Patterson, I'm the counselor for Emory Secondary School. First off, I would like to thank everyone for showing up tonight. I'm going to try to limit this to just the kids, they need a counselor, number one. Number two, they need somebody who already knows them. Bringing in anyone else at this point in time, it's not going to be cool at all. You're bringing in total strangers, they're going to have to build relationships to them for the class of 2016, it's just going to be hell for them, I just have to admit. I have been reassigned to the elementary school, I have longevity with this camp, with this district, I'm coming up on 10 years. And I had to go through hell just to be counselor in the first place, I mean, sit under somebody who didn't even have counseling credentials, really for five years. I finally go out, get my counseling credentials, got to sit under this person for five years, then finally get, become counselor and now you want to take me away from the kids. That's not cool, that's not cool at all. I'm here for the students and I want to continue to be here for the students. I'm willing to take a part-time counseling position as long as it includes another part-time position for me to teach on the high school campus. I understand cutbacks, I really do, but I'm, I think I've paid my dues here, right? And I think I've been here for the kids. Like Mr. Weiner, I too, like Mr. Weiner, I too do a lot on campus. I am, since I have a PPS credential, many times Mr. Ferber will leave the campus under my control. So, I am there taking care of that role, taking care of counseling role, doing whatever teaching, doing ever, helping out with the security, all of that. If you keep taking people away from the campus that the kids already know, you're just creating a recipe for disaster. You're, you're continuously cutting, cutting, cutting and you're not replacing them, number one. Number two, the students know us, they respond to us. You're going to have total chaos on your hands if you keep doing this. This counseling position really needs to stay. There's a lot of things that I do behind the scenes that nobody is aware of and I don't even think anybody really wants to know about it. But truth be told, I need to be on the campus with the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Hello, my name is Francisco Acosta, for most of you guys who know me, I'm the junior class president. And I've also wanted to speak on behalf of the cutting of the position of counseling at Emory. I feel like when you're taking Mr. Patterson away from us, you're not only taking a counselor, but you're also taking a member of our Emory family. We've developed this family for years with Patterson and it's not, it's not even up to debate to be able to take someone of that caliber out of our schools. Also, I'm not sure if anyone here is familiar with the concurrent enrollment form for colleges, but it is clearly stated that a counselor is needed to be able to fill this out for us to go to college. So, what I'm saying right now is, if you guys cut him, nobody here is going to college, not me, not Keely, not Symphony, not Ray, nobody. And I really think it should really, really be reconsidered, the, what you guys are doing here with Mr. Patterson. Mr. Patterson, I've known him for a long time, he's always done his job right, he's always helped me out. If it wasn't for Mr. Patterson, I wouldn't have took all four college classes that I've already took. And I just really feel like you guys really need to reconsider taking him away from our school and our family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is also Francisco Acosta, I'm his father and also the father of Vanessa who just spoke a little while ago, and I'm also the father of another alumni who's graduating this coming Saturday from University of Santa Clara as a computer science engineer. She also, when we first moved our kids to the Emory School District, I was very happy when, you know, everybody, the teachers and everybody was telling them, I'm going to college, you know, it's not an option, you just have to go. But now, you know, it seems like it's really, if there is no counselor, really, the, it's not going to be an option, they just won't be able to go. Because like, everybody has been saying, it's overwhelming when the, the time is like, time window is closing for you to submit your transcripts, to submit your application and, you know, the students, of course, they have been busy meeting the requirements to go to college, but they don't know, in fact, a lot of the teachers, I'm sure, don't know how to fill out those applications and how to make sure that the kids get accepted to the colleges that they, that they would like to go in order to, to become the professionals that they, that they want to be. So, I don't know how to say this because I wanted to sound like a threat, but like I heard one of the students say earlier, that some students are considering moving. I know that the position is probably being cut because of budget, because of money, but every time a student moves out of the district, the district loses money. And you know, if it's about numbers, about business, I think removing the counselor position is a bad business for Emory. And I mean, I definitely want the best for my kids, so if there's no, there isn't going to be the support and the resources for my son to go to college and follow his sister's footsteps, I'm definitely going to have to move him to another school where he can get the support that he needs. So, I, I, I just wanted to say that, so, you know, please consider not removing the position so we can all hopefully continue educating our kids for the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Good evening. First, I just want to start with just hearing the comments made about the teachers and the morale being down at the high school and the negative comments about the high school, it really saddens me and it just, is really disappointing. Because for teachers, the job is, it's a thankless job anyway and it's a tough job. And to deal with the kids of today, it's already a tough job. So, I just think that to have low morale at the school, it's just at the high school or any school, for teachers, it's just not a good thing. And it really saddens me as a parent because I want my kid to enter into a school where the teachers are excited, they're happy about being there, they're motivated about teaching the kids, but to be dealing with other administrative things as a teacher in this day and time, being a thankless job, I think is just, I mean, it's absurd to me, it really is, because it doesn't have to be like that. You can make, it, I'm looking at the agenda and it says it's supposed to be a family and, you know, high academics and so forth, and you can't get that when you have low morale. So, I'm just saying, just on behalf of parents, that we need the teachers motivated, we need the teachers happy, we need the teachers knowing that they have support from the administration, from the school board, from the school district, we, we need that. I need to know that my child is getting a good education. And I have not, the teachers that I have met at Emory are great, I mean, great, because I have a kid that's, you know, have a little struggles, few struggles, and I've had to meet with teachers numerous times, but I can say for Emory Secondary School, when I, from the moment I stepped into that building, I'm getting hellos and hi, so I, I couldn't tell that there was low morale. So, thank you all for, you know, I thank you so much because I never picked up on that. But, so I just want you to know that as a parent, that you have my support in whatever I need to do and whatever we need to do as parents, we will. And the second thing is really quick, is the counseling position, to hear that the counseling position may possibly be eliminated, that's, I mean- a position that is so beneficial to the kids, I just couldn't imagine that. I couldn't imagine me going through high school and not having a counselor. I know how, how crucial my counselor was to me getting out of high school, going on to college. So I just couldn't imagine that position being eliminated. With colleges being so competitive these days, as, as, I mean, even, it's beneficial for the kids, but it's also beneficial to the parents. I, because I, I need to be able to go into a counselor's office. I have older kids that graduated, and I was able to go and say, "Where are we?" Because sometimes you don't get the whole story from the kids. So I need to know where my child is as far as, you know, requirements.
You're out of time.
And so forth. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Abraham Sharif. I'm the father of Diana Sharif. I lived in Emory for almost twelve years, my kids. I have four kids, they go at Emory School. Honestly, we need the counselor in the school. I mean, we are paying, you know, I'm a business owner for almost fifteen years. We pay a lot of taxes to give, to let them stay and be there for our kids. We work hard for our kids. I mean, you guys have to put yourself in our place first. Your kids going out of school in Emory. We need the counselor, and we need to watch out for our kids them days. We work hard for them, then we need them to go to college. We pay, like I said, we pay a lot of taxes to keep them. You know, they're not making too much money to teach in California. You know, work with Uber, they're making more than what they make in California in the school district. So we really need your guys' help. We need to keep them here. I know this person for almost eight years. He's been good to all the schools. My kids are happy in there, and I don't wanna move them to another school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Symphony. I'm a student at Emory also. As a student at Emory, I am personally like reconsidering going to a different school with the counselor being removed, because I would rather go to a different school with the chances of falling behind with the support I need than to be at a school with no counselor, with no support at all. Also, count, cutting Ms. Brenda's position is, not to be selfish, but it is messing up with the seniors. Like, the seniors will not have any fun during their year at all. That is supposed to be the year we have the most fun, like with the senior activities, senior week and everything. And it's supposed to be the year we need the most support. So cutting, the counselor job will not help us at all. And I will be a senior next year, so that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ingrid Eliason. I'm the teacher librarian over at Annie Yates. And in the past, I actually did work at the high school site and in the middle school site. And when I first heard that Mr. Patterson was going to be moved to Annie Yates as a, as our new teacher for the middle school students, or was it, I'm not sure what grade level, but anyway, I was very surprised because Mr. Patterson has been the guidance counselor at Emory Secondary for so many years. And I've never heard anything from my former students but good things about what Mr. Patterson has done for them. And in addition, I'm also really surprised that we can't find the money in a nearly ten million dollar budget to pay for the position of Mr. Patterson. I find it, from my understanding, the Emory Secondary School is greatly understaffed. So I don't really see that as a place to look for cutting. If anything, I would probably look more towards the district office as a place for cutting and saving money. My suggestion actually would be, if you want to save money, since we're in need of more administrative coverage at the high school, is that Mr. Patterson should be considered as a combination dean of students and a school counselor. And then you could make good use of his experience, his knowledge, and his rapport with the students. And then you would have less issues with shortage, administrative coverage shortages, like there have been the past few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eliason.
My name is Mrs. Cosby, and I will have grandson that will be entering the secondary school this fall. And the thing, I'm sitting here, standing, listening to everything, because I wasn't aware of everything that was, that's been spoken tonight. But it seems to me, from me coming to board meetings, hearing what the new staff that has been drafted in, coming in saying that their whole idea was to build Emory, not to destroy it. You cannot build things by taking what you want to do. I don't know Mr. Patterson that well. I mean, I've heard of him. But I do know that students do need a counselor, and they need one twenty-four seven. If they are gonna be on the track for college, it doesn't make any difference whether they go to community college or go right into four-year. They still need to know the requirements that they need to have in place in order to be able to do, if they can, get the scholarship and make it on to the four-year. But even going to community college, you still wanna have the majority of the things out of the way that you will need when you transfer over to your four-year college. So to sit here and listen and hear these things, it really appalls me, because all I can see is that we have board members, give a tape, because everyone may not feel the same way, that don't give a rip about the students at Emory. And that is really sad. But I would like to know what would each and every last one of you do if it was your child? Don't kill off mine in the process of saving yours. Let's save them all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby.
May I be allowed to speak? After Ms. Payne, can I go?
After this comment, sure. You should go up there and make your.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Payne, and I'm the PE teacher at the secondary school. And I have been a teacher in the Emory Unified School District for twenty years. Over those twenty years, I have seen superintendents come and go, principals come and go, teachers, staff come and go, counselors come and go. And I first wanna say that I would put the Emory teaching staff and counseling staff up against anybody, any other staff in the Bay Area. As far as the counseling position goes, I know that we have had counselors who had no credential, who ran roughshod over the district, and no one said or did anything. And half the stuff, we didn't even discover until they were gone. And I just feel like Mr. Patterson has been there, and he has been such a stabilizing force for our school and for our kids. He knows these kids, he loves these kids. The kids know and love and respect him. And, and, and I'm not trying to get personal. I know CJ is a close, personal friend of mine, and I know what he has gone through this year. Most of you have no clue what he has gone through in his personal life. And it saddens me to see how he has been treated for all that he's given to this district. And I just think it is a terrible mistake to let him go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tilia. I've been in the Emory school dress shirt since I was in kindergarten. And Mr. Patterson, like, I had cousins that go to Emory, and my sister also went to Emory. And cutting his position is like really terrible, because we really need him. Like, how do you guys expect us to go to college? You guys are letting us, like, basically be on our own when he leaves. We have no one to support us. Mr. Patterson, he pushes us really hard, and we need someone like that. Also, it's like, there, there's been like a lot of stuff going on this year, and, you know, like, he's leaving our senior year, which means like, a lot of people, if Patterson leave, a lot of, you guys are not gonna have a class of sixteen. No one's gonna stay without a counselor. How, how do you guys expect us to go to college? And we're not gonna have a counselor to help us get there, where we need to be. I'm just saying, like, cutting Patterson's position is gonna have a lot of seniors leave the school.
Alright. My name is Bria Williams. I'm a sophomore, president of the sophomore class at Emory Secondary. Sorry, my word's slower. I just got my braces fixed, so. But, I'm starting freshman year, freshman year. I gotta pack it. And one of the three listings on there was, "We create a sense of family." And so far, I've seen Mr. Chavering go. And now I'm getting notice that Ms. Brenda's leaving, and that's, that's a really close person to me. I call her my grandmother and everything. It's Ms. Brenda. And I hear word the other day that, through the halls, so students are talking about it, and it's frustrating them, because we're losing our counselor. And as we sit there, we wonder, how is the twenty, the class of 2016 gonna make it? How is the incoming freshmen's gonna make it? I go to Mr. Patterson a good three times a day. You can ask him. I go to him all the time. Just to check in on, I might, or if I'm walking past in the hallway, I might be late to class, but I'm gonna say hi before I go. Seeing that door shut is just wrong. I'm sorry. I just can't, I just can't take it. I mean, Mr. Patterson is just that person you go to when you need that extra push, because some of the teachers are not always gonna be there for you. So you have to go to someone that you know is always there. And you cutting him is just not fair. Not fair to class of 2016, not fair to the class of 2017, and so forth and so forth, because I have little sisters and little brothers that are gonna go to Emory. My mom graduated from Emory. And she said it's so much better now because of the staff members and our teachers and our administrations that we have there. I feel that at Emory, hi, I've given, I've been given many opportunities. One, to sit on this board. Two, just to be surrounded by a family of upbringing. And it's wonderful. We have an amazing set of teachers who actually care. And for you to get rid of Ms. Brenda or Mr. Patterson is just unfair. And it is crucial, and I don't understand how you expect us to graduate. I don't understand how you expect that. We might graduate, but we just gonna be outside on the corner. You ain't gonna see us in college. And if that's where you wanna, if that's where you really want us to be, you want us to walk, you want us to see us cross that stage in college? Forget high school. We wanna get to college. We wanna get our diploma. You have to keep Mr. Patterson. That is one thing you cannot do wrong. You cannot say, "We create a sense of family." And we have lost so many people that were our family. And bringing in a total stranger would just, I don't know if you bring strangers in your house, but I don't, because that's just not who I am. We create a sense of family means recreate a sense. And Mr. Patterson and Ms. Brenda are our sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Bria.
Hello, my name is Aliyah Muhammad. I'm a junior at Emory Secondary. Perhaps the board remembers me from previous meetings. And I'm here to speak about the counselor position too. Our guidance counselor, Mr. Patterson, goes above and beyond his duties as counselor for the students of ESS. And his brand of loyalty, as well as the stability that comes with it, is not just something that you can take away without expecting major ramifications. And attempting to satisfy the need for a counselor with a part-timer who only, only present for a few days out of the week is not sufficient, as made evident in the past when students have petitioned for more guidance counselors, indicating that we need more of the services Mr. Patterson provides for the school and not less. Personally, Mr. Patterson keeps me sane enough to function in school. And with senior year coming on and college soon thereafter, I have no clue as to where I'll be or what I'll do without his advice. Given the kind of change that is trying to be made, our future as juniors is gonna be up in the air. Already, we've begun to panic over college and careers, but without the critical support of a counselor, we're doomed to drown. Doing this will only set us up for failure next year. It's also important to note that the weight Mr. Patterson shoulders will be given to the students and all other staff members. This will be overwhelming to the point of collapse as we've already, as we are already understaffed. Take away our counselor, and you've taken away our chances at success. You'll give us a major disadvantage that we may not be able to overcome. Ultimately, you'd be doing more harm than good to the school and thus the district by cutting Mr. Patterson in his position.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this, during the public comment period?
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a parent of a Annie Yates student. And, well, we've heard quite a litany of complaints here, mostly centered around the cutting of staff that the board is engaging in. And of course, we also heard some comments regarding the substandard performance of our superintendent, Mr. Rubio. What I heard here was really most compelling was a one woman that said that we need to build Emory, not destroy Emory. And that was really, that's a really compelling point to me, because that's in fact what we're doing. We're destroying it. We're not building. What this board has done is they have decided to cut their way to excellence. I call it cutting to excellence. There's a way to avoid these kind of cuts, but so far, that's fallen on deaf ears here for the most part. And that is to increase revenue by increasing the number of students that we have here at the district. And the way to do that, the way to do that, the only way to do that, since the Center of Community Life space site is too small, is to keep Annie Yates open. And that's how we increase the number of students that go to Emory, and that's the way we increase our revenue, so we don't have to have these kinds of cuts. And I hope it's been made pretty clear to you guys here tonight. You can't cut your way to excellence, even though you have sort of implied, intimated that you can. And I wanted to talk really quickly about, briefly, the comments I heard from some, a couple of teachers regarding Mr. Rubio's, the superintendent's, attendance database and the intimidation of teachers. Now, I spoke to Mr. Rubio about this, about, Mr. Rubio about this very subject last autumn. And I expressed my desire that this district should teach or treat the teachers as professionals. Mr. Rubio is a professional. The teachers are professionals. The teachers need to be treated as professionals. I pay Mr. Rubio a salary. I mean, if, if Mr. Rubio needs to know where every teacher is every second, well, I wanna know where he is every second. How about a time clock for the superintendent? So I can see his, they make sure he's coming to work on time. Or a better solution, how about we trust Mr. Rubio, because he's a professional? And note, John, you don't need to fill out a time clock. Why? Because you're a professional. But guess what? So are the teachers! So we need to start treating the teachers as professionals. You can come down like a ton of bricks on the teachers like the way you are, but there's gonna be negative consequences. You need to be open to the idea that there, that, you know, there could be unintended consequences to, to a hugely authoritarian regime that you're setting up. And I think, I just think it's wrong-headed. And then I wanted to say briefly, we heard from the board president, Mr. Affelt, at the last meeting. We're talking about the budget problems we're having. And I heard him say something that, as a parent, was so deflating. We're talking about, he was mentioning that we need to achieve solvency. And fifty, according to his calculations, fifty more students will bring solvency. Well, this is after a regime of huge amount of cuts that we've been talking about here tonight that people don't appreciate. So what Mr. Affelt is talking about here, the board president, is we need to, here's how hard the bar is set at Emory. Solvency, that's what we're trying to get. After a regime of cuts, solvency. I can't, that is so deflating and so disappointing. I think we should aim, put our bar a little higher than just trying to achieve solvency. I think we should be trying to achieve actual excellence, and the way you I think we should be trying to achieve actual excellence, and the way you do that is not by cutting, and not by aiming for solvency.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Any other public comments tonight? Okay, that's gonna close the public comment period. Uh, I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's very important that the board hears your perspective, uh, on matters that are on your mind. Uh, the, uh, just a point of clarification, the, um, this is not an agenda item, the, the issue of the counselor at the classroom, and I, and his or her assignment, that is something that, uh, the board does not control, individual assignments of individual teachers or personnel. Uh, and I don't think you want your board, uh, micromanaging the district at that level. So, um, but we appreciate hearing your concerns, and our job is to manage one person, uh, and that's the superintendent. So, your, your input is helpful in that regard. I, I heard a couple comments, uh, that, I just wanna clarify my understanding, the, the position is not being cut. The, we're not getting rid of a counselor, there will be a counselor, there will be counseling services. My understanding of the proposal is to, uh, reduce the position from a full-time to a less-than-full-time. I, uh, I personally take your comments to be, uh, expressions of support for Mr. Patterson in that position, or a, any counseling services. So, that's what I, that's what I'm, but to the ex- I just wanna clarify, to the extent that people think, there's not gonna be any counseling, particularly our students, there will be counseling services, uh, one way or another, next year. So, that's, that's the only clarifying point I wanna make on that. But again, thank you for, uh, giving us your feedback on that.
Mr. Affelt? Um, who do we go to regarding Mr. Patterson? 'Cause we want Mr. Patterson to be our, our counselor.
We understand. And I, uh, I think you've made your thoughts known to the superintendent, but you can make them known to him privately as well, that, um, the, we're gonna move on. All right, we're gonna move on to reports, are there any, um-
I'm sorry, can others comment on public comment as well?
Uh, it's not really, uh, you, you can make a comment-
Thank you.
-but we can't have a discussion about-
I'm not looking to discuss. So, I just, I, I, I just wanna throw out there that I, hearing the community is really powerful for me, um, particularly students and teachers. I think that's, we don't get enough of that at the board meetings, and I appreciate those of you who came out and spoke tonight. I do, uh, I do wonder how we can be a full-service community school, if we're not able to staff even a full-time counselor at the high school. I worry about those sort of things. Um, and so, I wanna share that. Um, you know, I think we focus sometimes too much on what's outside the school building, and not enough on what's inside. And so, I wanna be very clear on that, should be the focus. Um, and then, uh, Mr. Salvatore said something that really worried me, and I'd like to not let that go, and that's that we only have twenty Kinder students registered for the fall. And so, I, I don't know if a clarifying question is discussion, but it seems to me that that's a critical number when we're, uh, building towards solvency, and we only have twenty students, um, registered for the fall. Was that an accurate number?
Am I respond, are we having a conversation here?
Uh, it does sound like we're getting in a conversation. I think that, that's a topic probably for an agenda item, maybe for the next board meeting, going into the end of the-
We have to agendaize enrollment?
I think it's a important topic, would you like it? I'd like it agendaized.
And I'd be glad to email the, the board the current numbers, that's no problem.
The, the-
Okay. It seems to me that's a yes or no question, either. It, it doesn't seem to me that I'm not looking to debate on whether or not it's twenty kids enrolled for the fall. I just, it was a point of clarification.
Okay. Well, um, maybe you can address the information item in your report?
Sure.
If, to the extent you've got information.
Sure.
So, we're gonna move on to reports. The CSEA have, have any report for us tonight? ETA? Welcome, Ms. Turner.
Good evening, board members, parents, and students. I'm Dawn Turner, the president of Emory Teachers Association. A couple of things that I wanna bring to the board's attention, I know you've heard from quite a few people regarding the counselor's position. I just want to state, ETA's official position, we're disturbed by any cuts that affect students and student services. We are disturbed by the fact that the secondary school, every single year, has less and less to offer our students. We are going to have to come up with some creative administration in order to resolve this problem. Teachers are doing all that they can do, but, we are going to have to look at budget very closely, and figure out ways to keep services in place for our students. It is our first and foremost, um, mission, as far as teaching. And this district's mission should be the same. Secondly, even though, you know, we are looking at budgeting problems, we also wanna state that ETA does not always agree with the projected figures that the district comes up with. And so, oftentimes, we question, um, particularly around LCFF, we question the numbers, we question whether, uh, funding is being done correctly, and whether all things are covered equitably. And so, we will continue to question, um, all those items. There is one other student service that is particularly disturbing to us, and that's the lack of summer school. I just wanna point out to the board that the LCFF supplemental concentration money is increasing by four hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars, as of July first, 2015. So, we would like you to take a look at budget, we would like you to take a look at funding, and make sure that we are doing everything we can to keep services in place for our students, and to make sure that our students can compete with the other students in the And then, I'm gonna just speak a little bit about site morale, because we're having some really big issues with site morale at each site. Um, of course, around student services at the secondary site. I just wanna share a little bit with you that the elementary school site, um, really feels that our, well, let me back up. We have really hit an all-time high, as far as our administrator at the elementary school site. She is appreciated by students, families, and staff. But some members feel that her hands are tied at times. And we would like to make sure that our principal gets all the support she needs, in order to continue to grow, and to create the kind of school that we know she's capable of creating. And then, my last item for tonight is, um, I just wanted to give you a quick update on bargaining. So, we have one day scheduled, which is tomorrow. Um, just overall, we feel that bargaining has, you know, kind of, been pretty slow-going. And so, um, although it is not a requirement for Dr. Rubio to be at the bargaining table, we appreciate his presence, and we feel that his presence is needed more often, in order for all of us to get a good understanding of budget, and how we're gonna move this bo- board. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Do we have a student representative report? Please. Welcome.
Okay, so, couple of things, um, I'll start with the seniors, okay? So, the seniors' graduation is on Monday at six, at the Scottish Rights Center. Starts at six. I'm not sure if they're doing tickets this year, not sure. But, um, yeah, oh, no tickets? No tickets. So, there's no tickets for the graduation. We would like to extend invitation, make sure you guys are all there. Um, the sports banquet is tomorrow at six, which is all the sports throughout the year that we've all played, at the senior center. And, um, I would like to speak on the disturbance in the hallways, as far as talk goes at Emory. See, I, even though most of us came up and spoke about it, most of the students are disturbed with, um, how many subs we have per day, and how many, I should, I shouldn't have started there. Um, most of the students are disturbed with how we come to school, not knowing if our teacher's going to come to school. Or, not knowing if we're gonna have a great day at school, because maybe we didn't do our work following, because we don't know if our teacher's gonna be there. So, most students take that as a, hey, I'll do it next time. So, um, I know a lot of them are hurt because of the Ms. Brenda and Mr. Patterson situation with the cutting. So, we just wanted to make sure we rung that forward. Thank you, everyone who showed up and talked about that tonight, that really helped. And we will continue to come until we get what we want, 'cause we feel that's what we need best. The art and music sho- showcase was a success at Cliff Bar last week. The students' artwork was, um, well-received, and the beginning two advanced play, bands played, um, to a full house. So, we wanna thank everyone who came out to support. We wanna thank the superintendent and the president for coming out to support us, that was amazing seeing both of you there. And, we've also liked to thank Mr. Salvatore, who came up with the idea for all of us to come together and collaborate for a song called "Stand By Me," which we take personally, as you see our situation. And, also, the seniors would like to say thank you to Mr. Weiner, for all the work he has done this year. And, they said their picnic and bowling days last week was a blast, and they really appreciate that. And also, to all the seniors that are coming up, we wanna wish you guys good luck. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have a, a principals' update?
Yes, we do.
Evening, Mr. Ferber.
Good evening, board members, and Dr. Rubio, and colleagues, and friends. Here's what's happening at the high school. The senior banquet went well, as Bria said. Uh, this past Monday night, it was catered by Emory's Touch of Soul. The speeches and recognitions put a lot of positive highlights on seniors and staff members. Uh, we went to N.E.A.T.'s, a team of us went to N.E.A.T.'s today to speak and begin the planning of the four-year process, uh, the four-year plan for the eighth graders, and we spoke to both, uh, eighth grade classes. Um, gave them some, uh, four-year plans to fill out, part of it, so we can have them on file. Uh, gradu- graduation rehearsal is Monday at noon, at the Scottish Rights Center in Oakland, with a ceremony to follow at six. Um, yes, there are no seating tickets. You are welcome to join us, there's plenty of seats. That's why there's no tickets. Um, we have finalized our master schedule, as a staff, for next year. We'll, uh, thank you, Mr. Weiner, by the way. Uh, we will have, uh, after-school tutoring and credit recovery, Monday through Thursdays, from three-thirty to four-thirty, beginning next semester. Uh, we have a career center that we're opening up for students, um, where they can apply for colleges, apply for grants and scholarships, get work permits, get assistance with resume writing, college acceptance essays, and other internship opportunities in the community. That'll be a one-day, maybe two-day-a-week, uh, position, that is a free volunteer, that's gonna be in that position. That is not to replace the counseling position at all. It's just, it's just an assistant to the students. Um, we will have Odyssey Ware as our new credit recovery program. It will serve all our students with teacher participation in testing and grading. This will support our need to help support students in their efforts to graduate at the, by end of senior year. Uh, we're in discussions about possibly adding an AP Biology and a Spanish to our existing AP Calculus. This would bolster our offerings to students who are applying to universities in the fall. I'd like to brag about two students. Uh, this last weekend, I had the pleasure of going to Clovis, California, to watch Super Senior. Now, I say Super Senior, because, uh, this young man qualified in three events to be in the state, CIF state champ- track and field championships. It's Elijah Lucy. Elijah was qualified in the long jump. We don't even have facilities, let's just talk about this right now, because we're temporarily in Oakland, and we don't have a facility, so we have to practice at all these other colleges. Um, and Elijah did a great job of competing in the long jump, the two-hundred and four-hundred meter sprints. And, uh, and to be at that level, to be qualified to compete in Clovis, was pretty amazing. So, um, we went down there, and we watched Elijah long jump, run the two-hundred and four-hundred. On the first day, on Friday, Elijah qualified for the final, which is the following day. And, um, and at the final, he became, he was, he jumped twenty-three-ten, if you know how long that is. That's, that's almost a Bob Beaman kinda situation, for a high school kid. Uh, he did that, uh, on the Saturday. He placed sixth in the state. Now, if you think about how many high schools, and how many kids long jump in the state, that's sixth out of about six thousand, that's pretty darn good. Um, so Elijah Lucy, we're very proud of him. As a result of his great effort, and certainly the coaching and everything else that led up to it, um, this week, the coaches and Elijah has been receiving phone calls from universities like Cal State Northridge, UC Riverside, Cal Berkeley, and various universities in the Midwest, uh, to get Elijah onboard as a long jumper, which, which is pretty fantastic. That means college will be paid for, if he accepts one of these offers. China Kane Ross, my other student I'd like to talk about, was honored as the two, two thousand fifteen class valedictorian at the senior banquet. China headed to UC Berkeley on a partial scholarship, esd out Kathy Wang, with an overall-weighted GPA of four-point-oh-seven. Um, China will be giving a speech at graduation on, uh, on Monday, and we look forward to seeing as many of you there as we can. And that is my report, are there any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferber. Superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening. Um, I want to echo a couple comments that, uh, the senior banquet, I appreciate the staff who decorated, and the food that was coordinated, and seeing the students get their rewards, uh, awards was a great experience for me the other evening. I'd also like to, uh, let the board know that the feedback I've heard, uh, so far from staff, was that the smarter balance online testing went very smoothly. Uh, I wanna say, you know, a personal and direct thank you to our IT, uh, staff members who did their best to support the teachers through that, and I really appreciate that. I'd like to also, uh, update the board that, um, one of the things we'll be talking about later this evening, is our new local control accountability plan. We have been working very hard to keep in place the many programs that we do have, uh, at the high school and the K-eight, so we're, we're very happy, uh, that we have those additional programs, the additional science teacher at the high school, the additional programs we have at the K-eight, still in our local control plan, so I wanna make sure that you're aware of those, uh, items this evening. I'd like to also take a moment to thank Mr. Salvatore. The, uh, the music program is excellent. I think he's right on target, that it is an obvious, obvious, uh, clear moment, when you can see these students perform, that they have learned, uh, to the extent they have, under his leadership. And I think it's, it's, uh, it's amazing, every time I see him, and I got some photos of him that I need to share with him, and as animated as he is, and the students, I think it was wonderful. So, I wanna say thank you again to him, and the art teachers, and the staff, and to the Cliff Bar, for again, being a great partner to us. So, that was a really enjoyable event for us. The city, so everybody knows, the city and the district have come to some final agreements on a, I believe it's a five-by-twenty-five-foot banner. There'll be two of them hanging off the construction site, probably, believe, in the next few weeks. Uh, and, um, it is one of the things we wanna do, uh, to keep bringing to people's attention that we have a new facility opening, uh, and that we are, uh, looking to enroll students, so that'll be up. I appreciate people asking tonight about that, but I'd like everybody to know that is, that is coming, and, uh, I, I wish it was faster, but, uh, you should see some very large banners hanging off of that construction site soon. Um, and, uh, regarding, uh, the question, uh, regarding numbers, uh, it, that, the numbers, I think, that somebody said tonight are, are accurate. We have approximately twenty students so far, who have registered for TK and K. Thank you.
All right, and, uh, I, I have no board's president, uh, report tonight, so we're gonna go right into the public hearing on the local control accountability plan. Uh- Uh, this opens the public hearing on the local control accountability plan. Do we have any public comment on the plan at this point?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify. This is public comment for the plan, but wasn't there supposed to be public comment about the report outs?
No, there's not public comment about the report outs.
Well, then, I apologize.
Okay.
You're supposed to have a public comment after the presentation.
There's no presentation.
Is there any, any further public comment on the local control accountability plan? We will be having an item later. This is a point for anyone who has a public comment about the local control accountability plan.
Well, I would like to know why you're deviating from how, how the Brown Act provides for public comment on this item. The way it's supposed to work is you're supposed to, the agenda item, uh, is brought up. You're supposed to make a, the district makes a presentation. Then the, either from an outside source or, or internal source through staff, then the school board members are supposed to ask clarifying questions or they're allowed to ask clarifying questions. Then, the president's supposed to take public comment. Then, the, the board trustees engage in the substantive discussion regarding the topic and then vote, if there's any vote. So, I don't understand why you're deviating from that now when you're asking for a public comment. Uh, at the very beginning, seems to me, um, that what, what, that's just not the proper way to do it. We don't know, we wanna hear something so we can comment on something we hear.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. And all of that will take place under the item to come, Mr. Donahue. This, but for certain items, the education code requires a public hearing that formally be open and closed. And this is the time for the public hearing on the local control accountability plan. And if anyone has a comment at this point, we will take it. You may also comment later. Here, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing on the local control accountability plan. The next item is a public hearing on the budget. We'll also be discussing the budget later. You're welcome to comment at that point. But this is the formal public hearing on the budget. Would anyone wish to comment on the budget? Okay. That hearing is closed. We're gonna move on. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Please come forward during the public hearing on the budget.
Okay, I wanna reiterate here that the, the way this district is, is viewing its responsibility for the budget is to, uh, is to just eke by, try to get by. And that's what the, as I said earlier, the board president, Mr. Affeld, said. What we're trying to do is achieve solvency. And the way to do that is apparently, according to Mr. Affeld, to get fifty more students, which theoretically could fit onto the ECCL site. Um, it's, it is, uh, so low-minded that the bar, like I said before, the bar is set so low there that it's just, it's almost breathtaking that, that's your view of how public education should be, uh, achieved, uh, for solvency. Um, so I, I, I say that we, that no, we should, we should actually go for excellence and you can't cut your way to excellence. And so, it, it sounds like we're locking in this horrible, uh, set of cuts that we've had. And when, one parent or teacher mentioned earlier, every year, there's more cuts. And it's, this is, it just seems like the district is crashing. And I, I think you gotta make it, make some sort of substantive change here to have a, to have a budget so we can have a real school district. We don't have, I mean, if you compare this district to other school districts, this is not even really a, a real school district. Well, I mean, we don't have any AP, hardly any AP offerings and hardly any, you know, enrichment programs, hardly any, you know, sports or, you know, no drama. Like, it's, it's a, basically, it's a desert. And this board's and this district's solution to that is to, is to basically keep cutting and try to achieve solvency. And, you know, I, I just think we just need a massive turnover here. We gotta get rid of four, four school board members. And, uh, I'm just, the whole thing is just a huge disappointment.
Any other public comment?
Uh, I'm Ingrid Eliasen, teacher librarian at Annie Yates. Uh, in over twenty years of going to school board meetings, I haven't had this experience before other than the last school board meeting I attended, which it was, um, obvious that the intent of the president of the school board was to get rid of as much of the audience as possible prior to having any public comment about the item at hand, which was very controversial. And obviously, this is a tactic that's being repeated again. Let's go on and drone on and on and on and on and on for hours. Let's see how many members of the public will leave, losing patience at waiting for their turn to speak on the item at hand. Let's do that. So, now, what we'll do is we won't tell you what we're gonna talk about. We want you to speak to it now and then we'll wait till latest possible to talk about it and then all of you will be gone and you will have nothing to say.
Ms. Eliasen.
Touche, thank you.
Superintendent.
Could we, could we, could we just remind everybody that this is comment about the budget? If we could.
Yeah. Before you go on, if I could just clarify, the, on, on the advice of legal counsel, because it seemed odd to me that we have separated the discussion items from the public hearing. But our legal counsel suggested that this is a proper way to go. And also, contrary to the last comment, putting the public hearing on the budget, which is duly noticed and that the numbers are there, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, maximizes the, uh, participation of the audience when most people are here. So, that's why we're having a public hearing now for people to opine and give us their thoughts about the budget. And if you wanna stick around, that will be public too and you can make your comments at that point in time. Please proceed.
Um, from my perspective, it seems we have a lot of money. We use Chromebooks, laptops, the, um, iPads, but we don't have enough money for new uniforms and new books. I don't, I don't understand that. Um, we have the same uniforms from about ten years ago when my brother and sister went to Emory. Uh, we have the same books also from about ten years ago and it's old information. It's not updated. So, it seems to me we have money from the stuff that we are using, our resources. So, I'm just not understanding.
Thank you. Any other comment on the budget at this time? Yes, Sharif.
Yeah, like my friend said, um, we do, it seemed like we do have enough money. But apparently, I wanna know where this money is going to and what is it being helped to. We have this money, apparently, we have all this money, but we can't pay teachers. We're getting, we have, apparently, we have brand-new cars at the school, black Escalades, minivans. But yeah, we still have no updated books and we got brand-new desks. But where is this money going to? Because it's for surely not helping us. Apparently, I know it's going all to the new school. If you got money to build a new school, I'm pretty sure you can afford to update books. These books are falling apart, literally. And then when we, apparently, when we lose them, the students, we have to pay for books that are breaking apart, coming undone. And that's not fair. I'm not finna pay money I work for, for a book. Y'all apparently got money in the budget to buy. So, that's all I have to say.
Um, while we're talking about money, I'd just like to mention that I've seen a pattern occur in the substitutes at Emory. I've noticed a lot of times there are substitutes on campus getting paid for full days when they're there for partial days or the teacher is there as well. And I think that's a waste of money that we can be put, that can be put in better use, like keeping Mr. Patterson, who's offered to take a part-time position because he cares about us so much. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So, are you okay?
Um, yeah, that's probably the best way to do it.
All right, so, a question that I was asked earlier is, why are we funding so much money into the ECCL when no one's gonna be there because of the fact that you guys are cutting so much? That was the question I was asked. That's the question I'm asking all.
It's a good question.
Do we have any other public comment on the budget? Is that, yes, you do? No, okay. All right. This closes the public hearing on the budget and stick around if you wanna talk about it more. Uh, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. Do we have any items that board members wanna pull from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull Personnel Actions.
Yeah.
I'd like to pull item two and three.
Okay. So, we're, uh, and two and three. I was gonna pull three. Okay. Um, so, let's take warrants first. Since somebody pulled that, uh, do we have a motion to adopt the warrants?
I'll move.
Do we have a second? Uh, roll call, Ms. Tamory.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Member Williams Muller?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Okay, uh, Ms. Ash, you pulled item two, the minutes of the special May twenty-sixth.
I just need to abstain, I was not present at that meeting.
Okay, so let's vote on that separately. Uh, do we have a, a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Roll call. This is on the item two, minutes of the special board meeting, May twenty-sixth.
Member Ash, did you say you were not at the twenty-seventh?
Correct.
Member Ash?
Abstention.
This is for the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
I was not here for either meeting, actually.
You wanna roll call the rest?
Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the special meeting on the twenty-sixth either. And so, we don't have a quorum to vote on it.
You're right. Uh, so why don't we, uh, yeah, good catch. Move that to the next, uh, agenda item. Hopefully, we'll have a quorum. I actually, um, take that back. Being present and abstaining satisfies the quorum requirement.
But you need three votes to pass it.
Yes. That's the problem.
Yeah.
All right, moving it to the next agenda item. Um, so that'll be, that'll be moved, Ms. Tamory. And I can take a vote on that. Uh, item three?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Cause you were there for that.
I was there for that.
All right. Um, actually, I wanted to, uh, uh, pull that because I had some comments on that, which is, uh... Yeah, I sent, I sent you, do you wanna read, Ms. Tamory, the, my amendments to the, the questions? Which is not a verbatim, but it, but in my attempt to capture the, the questions for the ECCL Annie Yates study session series.
So, there were two amendments proposed to the minutes of May twenty-seventh. Uh, the first amendment was for item J-four, the ECCL slash Annie Yates use to include the following sentences and it was a brainstorming session. What are the potential positive and/or negative effects of K-12 colocation according to the educational research and available local experience? In other words, Madison Park and Lighthouse. Number two, how does available space at ECCL compare to that of Annie Yates for K-three or K-five students? In other words, including playground size, separation and safety. Number three, what combination of uses of ECCL and Annie Yates best increases our ability for greater enrollment? And number four, how would the ECCL site be used differently if K-three or K-five were housed at Annie Yates instead? The second amendment concerns item J-five, the naming of the ECCL gym, to read as follows. The board discussed the matter and before acting, agreed to first discuss the issue with the City Schools Committee.
Those are my proposed amendments, trying to capture a, a little bit more fully than what's in the draft amendments, the, the questions and also the, uh, capture a little more accurately the, the naming discussion. The, any discussion, objection, disagreement, additions to that? Okay, do we have a motion, uh, to adopt the minutes of the May twenty-seventh meeting?
So, I moved.
All right, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, was there a second?
Yes, uh, Mr.
Miriam seconded, right?
Yeah.
With Member Ash abstaining.
Correct.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Um, I believe Member Williams Muller was also absent. And President Affeld?
Uh, yes. Okay, uh, item four is we pulled Personnel Actions. Uh, Member Pats, did you give a comment?
Um, so, I just wanted an accounting. I, I just feel like every week we lose another teacher. And so, I just want an accounting of how many teachers have we lost this year for next? And, um, how many vacancies do we have open for the fall?
I don't have absolute recall of that at this particular moment, but I can gather that information and get it to the board.
We would need a request like that in advance, please.
Okay, I just, I, I just, I feel like we're losing people on a, you know, and every two weeks we meet and I see another name of, you know, since the non-re elects in March, we just seem to be losing a, it seems to me, and I just was wondering if my memory is correct. But okay, I would appreciate that if you could get that to me in a timely manner.
Okay, do we have, uh, a motion on item four from the consent calendar?
So, moved.
Okay, a second. I'll second. Uh, roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Member Williams Muller?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes.
Okay, now, we are on to the discussion and action items for the evening. Uh, the first item, superintendent, do you wanna introduce?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Uh, the first item, the purpose of this item is to inform the board about the changes the school district has made to special education programs and services in order to continue to meet the needs of our students who have learning challenges while we've continued to effectively manage our resources. And we have, I think, we have Ms. Steele tonight and...
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak, um, to such a large audience this evening with many of our special education team members here and their esteemed colleagues in general education. Um, I've presented to the board before in the past about the changes that we made to how we offer services in special education. Um, I've, uh, presented to the board more recently on the creation of a preschool program. So, I'm just gonna do a brief overview and, and talk about, um, what our plans are in terms of for next steps. But I just want to, for the, the benefit of folks that hadn't been here at a, at a previous presentation, is, um, the district made an, an effort to focus on creation of inclusive, accessible and equitable learning environments for all students by using a learning center model where any student who needed access to specialized academic intervention, um, intervention services or remediation services could go to the learning center for those supports and services. And that would be students with or without disabilities. And so, we... And so, we established a learning center at, um, the high school, and we also established a learning center at the elementary middle school at NAATs. And this year, earlier this year, we established a learning center model here, um, at the district office in partnership with the YMCA, who operates state preschool and Head Start. In terms of that particular model, it's a little bit different at each of the sites, depending on the student needs and depending on, um, the staffing as well, but as I've, um, mentioned to the board previously, at the high school setting, we've got, um, education specialists assigned to the math strand and the English strand, and they support the students in the general education classroom where the core content instruction is provided by the general education core content specialist. There is a learning center where, um, education specialists may pull student groups into the learning center for typically pre-teaching or re-teaching, um, also for the, um, period zero, which is a curriculum and support period, where students, um, get assistance in terms of planning and organizing, um, their school materials, planning for projects, planning for tests, um, organizing how they're gonna study. Um, there's also sessions during each month that are focused on college and career planning to ensure that students are aware of what their interests are, aware of how to work towards, um, specific kinds of employment, as well as how to access a college environment that is of interest to them. At, um, NAATs Elementary School, it's a similar model for the middle school students, um, but there's a greater emphasis on pulling students out to provide a lot of pre-teaching, re-teaching, building vocabulary, and a lot more of the, um, special education support is provided in the general education classroom. So, the biggest change has been to focus on core content instruction being provided by the general education specialist in that particular area, and then providing student support in that classroom, as well as providing, um, skill instruction in the learning center. At the, um, preschool this year, we have students who are attending most of the, their day in the Head Start classroom, um, in some, involved in some amazing activities, um, and a, in scintillating learning environment, and a portion of their school day, they go to a learning center as well, and they work with an education specialist, a speech therapist, or occupational therapist in, either individually or in small groups, but again, spend the majority of their day with their same-age peers, um, accessing, um, core content instruction. In terms of, um, how many kids we're serving in, in the preschool, uh, in the past, we have sent our students to other school districts. We have transported them to Berkeley or Albany, um, and these are 4 and 5-year-olds being transported to another district. This year, we were able to serve all of the students that were identified as eligible and needing special education services here in this building. Um, we ended up serving a total of 6 students here, and in the past, those would've been 6 students that we would've sent someplace else. We had 3 students who continued to finish out their preschool year, um, at Albany because they'd already started the year there before we started our program, um, but the plan is for next year, all of those students to return to their home community and be educated with their neighbors, their peers, um, in their home community, uh, and grow up in the elementary school and middle school and high school that's available for them here in Emory Unified. Um, I mentioned that we had 6 preschool students this year at NAATs. We serve 48 students, um, in terms of, that have IEPs in the learning center. Um, but the other thing that I mentioned in the very beginning is not only do we serve students who have learning challenges identified, um, as disabilities, but we also provide intervention services to any student who needs them, and I see many of the gen ed teachers in this classroom that recognize that maybe 2 students go out of their class that have an IEP to work with one of the education specialists, but maybe another 3 students who don't have IEPs also go to the learning center to receive instruction and, and possibly reading or math or written expression. So, um, at, at, at NAATs Elementary Middle School, the K8 site, we serve 48 special education students and 55 general education students. So, we serve well over 100 students with the 4 staff members that we have providing those intervention services, um, and they're very creative in terms of how they do that, but at the same time, they've got terrific relationships with their colleagues in the general education classroom, supported by the board with collaboration funds that allows every week, 1 day to be set aside with a roving sub, um, so that those teachers can collaborate in terms of what's coming up in the next week with regards to curriculum, which students need help in particular areas, what modifications need to be done, et cetera. At the high school, we have a smaller caseload in terms of the number of students, um, with disabilities that are served there. We have 14 students. In the past, um, we've had anywhere from 20 to 25, so there are fewer students at the high school receiving, um, services through the learning center, um, and it, it's likely due to one particular reason. Um, it might be due certainly to declining enrollment, but one of the things that we know is a number of our students that come to our district are here on inter-district transfer, and when we move to a learning center model, that is a full inclusion model, meaning the students are first and foremost in a general education classroom. Many of the students that come from other districts have an IEP that indicates they need to spend most of their day, um, in a restricted setting, a secluded setting, that's typical, typically called, um, a special day class, or oftentimes, they need to be in a special math class or a special English class. We don't have that design at our high school. We typically modify, um, and collaborate with the gen ed teacher in terms of how we do provide, um, access to the core content instruction. At, um, Emory Secondary, um, general education students also have access to intervention services, and how that's typically done is the education specialist may be in the general education classroom, um, that, that in, in consultation with the gen ed teacher, they might divide the students up into certain groups, or split the class, or students that have similar, um, challenges with certain topics or skills, um, may go to the learning center with students that have IEPs as well. And so, again, it's a very fluid, um, program at the high school, more dependent in terms of, um, what's going on in the particular classroom and coming up with the next unit. Where NAATs, we actually created intervention groups. Students were invited to join those groups for a certain period of time so that we could evaluate progress, um, and so, that was more mirrored off of, um, some type of, uh, intervention model, not specifically RTI, but particularly off that model. Just briefly, in terms of fiscal impact, um, I mentioned about costing, about sending students to other school districts to, um, provide the special education services. Being able to provide our own services allows us not only to keep our students in their home community with their neighborhood peers, but also, it allows us to, um, provide that instruction ourself without having to pay another district to do that, and also without having to pay the cost of transportation to go to another district. So, having that preschool program here, um, I think has been a terrific benefit to our community, but also, fiscally, um, will benefit the, the district as well. Um, also, the education specialist providing intervention services, um, allows us to continue with remediation efforts or tutoring, tutoring efforts for students that, um, need those particular services. Um, in terms of next steps, I mentioned previously that, um, we had students that were attending Albany. Um, these are students with more, um, moderate needs or intense needs than the district in the past has served. Um, because we have such a creative, uh, team and partnership in our school community, we are actually bringing those students back to our home district, so students, um, that have more, um, needs in the, due to disabilities like intellectual deficits, or autism, or emotional disturbance, those students will be served at NAATs. So, we're creating cohorts within grade levels so that staff can actually support them in the learning center and in the general education classroom. So, that's our, our plan for next year is to focus on a small group of kinder students, as well as, um, a couple of our 8th grade students moving on to high school, have more significant needs for modification of the curriculum. In the past, they typically would've gone to a special day class and received the majority of their instruction in that class, and we're staying with the inclusion model where we're gonna be making the modifications in that particular classroom and using the learning center as well. I, at this time, since we've got so many people in the audience, I'm sorry that a few of them left, um, I'd just like to, to note that 2 of the things that we're gonna continue to need to do is, 1, continue to provide that collaboration time. It's critical for the general education teacher and the special education teacher to be planning together and to make those changes together and to support each other. Um, and the other piece is, we're gonna continue to need, we're gonna need to offer and continue to offer, um, training in differentiating instructions so that our general education colleagues understand how to help students with learning challenges, whether they have an IEP or not, um, and that we're there to support them on an ongoing basis with professional development and not just one time or every now and then. Um, but I'd like to acknowledge that the reason that we can do all this is we have an amazing team. We really have an amazing team in special education, and I'd like to acknowledge that some of them are in the audience. We have learning specialists, um, at NAATs, Alona Rhodes, who has been the queen of intervention for our primary grades, and I think many of the primary teachers have appreciated the fact that she has single-handedly provided intervention services to more than 38 kids in general education. Um, we also have Michelle Peskovich, who not only provides services at NAATs, she actually extended her credential authorization to teach in preschool, and she has a split placement and starts her day off over here in preschool, and then finishes her day over at NAATs, and next year, she'll do that again in partnership with Ms. Rhodes, who will be focusing on the K2 strand. Um, we have Leslie Epstein and Karen Sukennick with our intermediate and middle school students, and just like to acknowledge that Karen Sukennick is going to be working very hard to ensure that our 8th graders that are moving up to 9th grade, um, have adequate support and, um, um, not just adequate support, but, um, training with, to, um, providing training to the high school teachers, the general education teachers, so that they can understand how to best support the students that are coming to their programs as well. At the high school, we have Mr. Ross Benbrook. I know he's not here this evening, but he started with us this year, and he has, continues to be creative in deciding how to best serve our students in the, the math strand. We also have, um, Alura McGilvery, our speech therapist, Lauren Laplante, our school psychologist, and Lynn Perkins, our school nurse, who have worked very hard this last few weeks to ensure that parents are comfortable with the plans that we make for their students with their input, um, and feel secure in, in the plans that we have moving forward despite, um, some of the concerns that have been shared this evening. It's a challenge to convince parents that you believe you have an effective program moving forward when they're hearing, you know, about cuts and, um, changes in the district, so I appreciate those of you that have been committed to the students that you're working with, and I would open this to any questions that board members might have at this time.
Do we have any, uh, clarifying questions from board members?
I remember at this time last year, we talked about, um, splitting, or maybe it was a little later in the summer, we talked about splitting the responsibilities of the teachers at the elementary school between, um, general ed and special ed, and I'm just wondering if we're tracking outcomes as well as just student counts? I mean, our, our numbers are historically, are typically low, um, in our identification of students, and I'm just wondering if we're preventing, you know, the, the purpose of a good RTI program is to keep kids off of IEPs and 504s, and so, I'm just wondering if we're tracking that data as well and what it looks like.
I, I'm not sure that I can respond fully to that question because we actually don't operate a formal RTI program. Um, it's definitely one of the things the district has been interested in doing for quite some time now. We do provide intervention services. We do use, um, school-wide data resulting from DIBELS, as well as the statewide test to identify students who are in need of intervention services. Um, the interventionists who work with those particular students do collect data, um, but it's not as formal as bringing it back to teams, looking at, do we need to, um, repeat the student in an intervention program for a specified number of days, weeks, et cetera? We don't have anything that sophisticated. Um, we certainly would like to, but what we are doing is we do collect data on the students that we're working with in those groups. I mentioned the collaboration sessions. We have some of those teachers in the audience where those students who come into those intervention groups on a weekly basis, is the, um, interventionist, which is the special education teacher, and the general education teacher talk about those students. You can see him nodding because, um, I require collaboration summaries, so the education specialists actually write up, you know, what the progress has been for those students, what the concern has been, and then what the continuation plan is for those students with regards to intervention services. So, but collecting actual data on how effective the program is, school-wide, we don't have that data. We have it individually per student.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you, uh, yeah, how many special ed students do we have approximately in the district?
So, our, our numbers, the last 3 years, have been relatively stable despite the fact that we've had changes in our overall enrollment. We typically hover around 62 to 65 students. We are identifying about 8 and 1/2% of our student population, um, in our SELPA, where there's 4 other school districts in ourselves. Typically, those districts are around 10 or 11%, which is consistent with the state. Um, we aren't under-identifying according to the Department of Education, but we are a little bit lower than, um, some of our other districts, so we are certainly not over-identifying.
And how many students are we sending off to other districts to receive their services?
That's a great question. This year, we have 6 students in out-of-district placements. Last year, we had 10. Next year, we'll have 3. That could change at any time, and, and the reason why that changes is because, um, we're creating programs for those students to stay locally, but what ha, has happened in the past is we'll have a student that come in, that comes to our district that has a need, um, and, uh, 3 years ago, we didn't think we could serve students with those kinds of needs, 'cause we were kind of locked into a, a different kind of model, um, but what's happened, as I reported to the board before, is other districts no longer have those spaces available, and that has really forced us to be more creative in terms of developing programs for our students. So, I, um, we have had students in non-public schools in the past. We have not had any students in non-public schools this year.
Um, did those 62 include preschool?
Yeah, so, the, the breakdown, um, we have, in terms of the preschool, we have 14 students at the secondary program. We have 48 at the elementary and preschool program.
Okay, so, the 48 was included?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, what does it cost us to send a child to the YMCA program?
Well, that's a great question. Zero.
Costs us nothing.
$0. We have an MOU with the YMCA that operates that program that acknowledges that they will set aside at least 10% of their student spaces for enrollment of students with disabilities. We have no extra costs with regards to instruction because we're using our currently existing staff. I mentioned earlier, one of our teachers teaches in the preschool, as well as at NAATs, our speech therapist and our school psychologist and our OT that we already have, um, on staff, come over from NAATs or Emory Secondary and provide those services. We did have to add, I shouldn't say we had to, we added, um, a 2-hour aide every day so that when the students are in the Head Start classroom, um, they have additional support, and that was primarily, we had, um, 1 student that has more intensive needs due to pretty serious autism.
So, does the Y then just bill the state directly for the preschool cost, or?
Well, we, the, the state preschool dollars actually flow through us, and I believe they might be giving a presentation later tonight and, and maybe could, uh, address that question as well. I am certainly not the expert in that area, but I, I do wanna comment that they have been a, a great agency to partner with. We have been able to fully integrate any student that we had with, with, um, learning challenges. They've welcomed us into their classroom. Um, we share space, share materials, we cross-train, um, and all of those are to the benefit of the students and their parents, who actually can walk their children to preschool now instead of having to wait for a taxi to pick them up to take them someplace else.
Thank you.
You mentioned the, oh, actually, before I get to that, the evidence of, of achievement or improvement, um, what, what is the evidence indicating, and, and can we get, you know, more school-wide, district-wide data on this? Is it the S-BAC or?
I think we can, but certainly...
What's the barrier to not having?
So, certainly, all of our students are general education students first, so they have, uh, we have assessment information on, um, all students with, with special education needs as we would with a general education student. So, in the past, they've had the CST assessment scores, so they have state test assessment data. They also have school-wide assessment data, so all the students are getting the DIBELS. Um, we've also done the teacher-made test, the monthly test, so we have academic data from those assessment measures. Um, one of the things that we don't currently do and we could do is to be looking at subgroups. Um, one of the things that happens from CDEs, 'cause we're such a small district and we have such a small subgroup of special education students, they don't typically send us data on that, that group, um, but that's not... on that, that group, but that's not, doesn't mean that we can't be looking collectively at that data and making decisions as a whole based on data. In the past, we've done surveys of students, parents, and teachers with regards to the learning center and the support and the progress that the students are making, so for qualitative data. And then each of the students with IEPs all have individual assessments and progress reports. So every student generates data with regards to how they're improving based on individual goals. Oftentimes, we do assessments that talk about not only the skills that they've learned, but the grade level equivalence that they've gained during each year that they receive services. So we have all of that data on students. And I can say, yes, all of our students are progressing, because when they're not, then we have, we reconvene and we take a look at each other and we ask, why not? What do we need to do differently? And I have not been at an IEP meeting where we're not making progress. I have been at a couple IEP meetings over the last three years where students had needs for more intensive services all day long that we didn't offer in this district, but that was offered in their home school district, and a couple students returned to a home school district in order to access a different kind of program to meet their needs.
Okay, well, I would appreciate that, and I would understand where we don't currently give the CSTs. We now just gave the baseline, smarter balanced assessments, so maybe we'll be getting more data, but it also seems we need to be more systematically giving formative assessments district-wide, and this is a student population we need to be tracking closely.
Absolutely. We need to ensure that we're doing the right thing, that the model that we have is working for our students.
Right, so to the extent that you can, you know, improve our analysis, tracking, reporting, assessment of how our kids are doing, I think the board would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
You mentioned a collaboration time?
Yes.
Is that currently working well in, in your opinion of the ability of the special ed teachers to collaborate with the grade-level regular ed teachers? And, and, you know, are there adjustments, if any, that need to be made in the master schedule to, to make that work better, or it's, it's working fine?
Yes, to all of those questions that you just posed at one time. Personally, I believe it's a critical service that we need to provide in order to, if we're asking general education teachers to modify instruction and provide support and accommodations for kids who learn differently, we need to help them do that. And we need to do that in a number of ways, but one of the ways that we do that is that we ensure that the student, the teacher of each of those students has ample time to plan together with regards to how they're going to adjust that instruction. So I mentioned before, at Anna Yates, we have a roving sub once a week, and there's a schedule put together, and the roving sub goes from gen ed classroom to gen ed classroom, releasing a general education teacher who then meets with the special education teacher, and oftentimes, other staff join that meeting as well. There might be the school counselor, the school psychologist, the EL teacher. They all have ideas with regards to how to address the needs of students in that particular classroom. That's weekly at Anna Yates. At ESS, it's a little bit different, and I'll say to you that it, it, it hasn't been consistent, and I don't know that, that's, that's a bad thing. There's certainly some ESS teachers here who, who may want to comment on that later. At ESS, we actually ask teachers to give up a prep period, and we pay them for that. So it's a voluntary collaboration time, and they meet typically, two years ago, we were meeting an hour a week with English teacher and an hour a week with the math teacher. Depending on the relationship that they have and how they do their planning, I know this year, there's been a lot more planning that's been done outside of paid collaboration time. I don't know that that's bad, so I know collaboration is still going on. There's also been, in, in terms of one of our strands, we were not fully staffed the full year, so some of that collaboration time was not going on. But in the past, we have had regular weekly collaboration at ESS between the special education teacher and the general education teacher. Our plan is to do that again next year, meaning to set aside those collaboration funds. It costs about six thousand dollars at Anna Yates to have a roving sub every Wednesday all year long, and I think we spent maybe twenty-five hundred dollars at ESS for two special education teachers to collaborate with the English and math teachers over the last two years, not one year, but two years.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any other clarifying questions from the board? All right, we're going to open this up to public comment. Any public comment on this item?
Thank you.
Audrey Miles, Anna Yates. Thank you, Ms. Steele. I would say that I am definitely a recipient of your wonderful staff. My class was a kindergarten class with a large percentage of students who had needs this year. I meet with Ms. Rhodes weekly. Those meetings are very effective. We plan both the intervention, we keep track of the daily formative assessments, and what we call exit tickets for those students, which is a daily assessment that we do, as well, when problems occur, there's an immediate response. She has a pull-in and a pull-out. She pulls so many students per day, two times a day, so that there's a cohesive group of students that meet daily, okay? And that has been very effective. When you talk about the data, I just got my DIBELS. Out of my eighteen students, sixteen are benchmarked, and we have two intensive that still need some assistance, but those students are also TKs and are repeating, not repeating, but will do the two-year kindergarten, so that's one reason, and one is a second language learner that we need to watch clearly next year. I would say that I would not have been as successful without my partner, Ms. Rhodes, and without the special ed department, because this year has been very challenging for me. It's been a long year, and I really appreciate the special ed education department, all of you that are here, Ms. Perkins, and I'm so tired, I can't even think, I'm looking right at you, I can't think of your name. Say your name out loud. And so, yeah, and it's very tearful for me because there, several of the students were students who came in at kindergarten during the summer, and they were definitely identified, and they came into my room with an IEP, and there was some very serious concerns about how we were going to effectively service these students, and these are our students who are benchmarked and have, are ready for first grade, and that I'm very proud of. Thank you.
Nice work, Ms. Miles. Ms. Lewis?
Good evening, board members. I'm Tracy Lewis. I teach second grade at Anna Yates, and I have been working with the special ed department for quite some time. Our collaborations are vital. They're very, very vital. That's the place where we bring the information. We can discuss, we can talk, we can create new ideas and try different things, try different arrangements. Just to give you an idea of student progress, I had about nine students a couple of years ago who needed either some type of intervention, either they were unidentified, through collaborating and working together with the teachers and the, the special ed teachers or the, I'm sorry, the, the learning specialists. Those students, after two years of work, were proficient in English and language arts. I don't necessarily look at how well my students do when they are with me, but I'm tracking how they do when they leave me, and that they are staying proficient, if they are staying at advanced, and some of them were at advanced for fourth grade and they were proficient. Many of them achieved that proficiency in third grade because of the interventions and the collaborations that we did and the rotation, because we do believe in the less, the least restrictive. So some, some weeks, they had a few weeks of intervention, and then they would have a few weeks in the general ed classroom, and the ones who needed, we were able to cycle through and make sure that the students who really needed the intervention really got them at the point in which they needed them, because they didn't always need them for math. Sometimes they needed them for reading, and it, it went both ways for, for different kids. So we really look at meeting the needs of the students at the time in which they need the needs, and also for the skills. So I'm looking at how those students are doing, and they are in fifth, fifth, sixth grade now, fifth and sixth grade. So if, the fact that they are still meeting proficient on state exams, that's, that's your, that's your evidence. We do look at data. It is a very, very critical part to the program. Some time ago, I came to the board and expressed my concern about our students who do not score low enough to qualify for special ed, and they don't score high enough to be proficient. Those are the students who are cycling in and out of these discussions, and so we're meeting their needs, and it, and for some of them, it takes them a year, maybe two years, to reach that proficiency, but our goal is that they reach advanced. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Weiner, I got two things to comment on this special ed. First, working on the master schedule, we are going to still have our preps aligned for the, I know as the math teachers, I work with the advanced students, I don't tend to work with that group as much in that regard, but the preps will be aligned so that they can continue collaboration, because that has been working very well. The second thing is my concern with identifying students as the SST coordinator, 504 coordinator. We've had a lot of recent SSTs and 504s where we've actually identified a student for a 504 coming up. Hopefully, they, we can get it put into place next year, but that's been with the district for the last four years, and this is really concerning. And one of the problems is that with our current understaffing is we can, as I am still a teacher, it's hard to run these 504s and meetings as much as necessary for all the students that could actually benefit from it. So there, there needs to be more support in allowing there to be more flexibility of when SSTs and 504s can be held instead of once or twice a week, and which doesn't always work with other stakeholders, including principals, counselors, psychologists, and our wellness center, who have other obligations. So we're having a lot of difficulty servicing all the students that actually need it, and it's very scary when you find out a student has a medical condition that should have been getting a 504 accommodation three weeks before the end of the school year. That's really a disservice. So we need to find a way to get more awareness and be able to address these concerns earlier.
Just to make sure I understand the scheduling issue? Is it that the, there are set times, like one or two set times during the week, and that's the time for 504, and that's it?
I can only hold an SST.
Hold on, let me just, or are you saying there's only enough staffing to do it once or twice a week, and we need to be doing, it's, it's not that there's set time?
So there is set times because I still have a class schedule to teach, and then I run the SSTs during one of my prep times. So one of my additional prep times is used for attending SST meetings, also attending cost meetings and collaborative meetings like, of that nature, and planning the PBIS. And since I'm only available during that time to run these meetings, that limits when the meetings can be held and how many we can hold a week. And since other staff are often in conflict with those times, so there needs to be more staff running those meetings, because that position's not going to be there next year.
Got it. Thank you.
I'm Mrs. Cosby, and I'm speaking again on the special ed situation. As I said earlier, I have two grandsons that will be attending secondary school, and they both are autistic. One is on this end of the spectrum, and the other is on the other end. The fact that I already know what I'm hearing now, that they are greatly understaffed to do the things that need to be done, and I would like to see something in place at Anna Yates, because when they decide to have a learning center, and with parents like myself and others steady coming to the board, asking for what would need, need to be done, and observing what was going on at the school, and coming here and saying what was happening. Anna Yates has really shaped into a beautiful learning center. I can't say enough for Ms. Rhodes. I can never say enough for that lady. She is one heck of a special ed teacher, and she works from her heart. She has nothing but to do with every student in her heart, and that's, she done it for my other grandson that needed it. And this Sukennick that came in two years ago, three years ago, whichever, I, she's beautiful. She works from the heart as well with the students. And collaboration that they have set up in place where they have not voluntarily, mandatory. And I think that needs to be there at the secondary school as well, because if I'm doing something where maybe I don't feel like doing it, just because I don't feel like doing it, then I'm able to do that because it's all the volunteer. It needs to be mandatory, because everyone needs to be in place, unless someone is sick or something like that, of course, we give away for that. But it needs to be in place for those students, for them to discuss what needs for each and every week, and as the teachers that came up here spoke, you heard how well it has worked for them. And so this needs to be in place, because one grandson is fine, he'll be going with his diploma, but the other would have to be given a certificate of completion, because there's no way that he will be able to give his diploma. Not cutting my grandchild short, but I know what he's capable of doing. And that's because of teachers that they, that he had, myself talking with them, my daughter talking with them, that all this has taken place. And we need this in place for the secondary school as well. It's very understaffed, so we do need more staff members to help bring this about. And if, if anyone gets stuck, go take a look at Anna Yates, see how well they're doing. Get some encouragement from some of the teachers there that's going through it now. You know, it can be shaky for anyone they first start out, not knowing what would be happening, working with these students. Some teachers not saying anything about them or cutting them short, but that's just the way it results. If you, most people are scared of something that they have never been exposed to, and they're not going to do their best until they can feel comfortable and know that it's all right to make a mistake. Because the average parent know there are going to be some mistakes when they're first starting out. What a parent dislike is a hateful, mean person that's not doing the best for their child. That's where the problem comes in there. We went through a lot of mistakes when Anna Yates first started. But we worked together. All the teachers, the special ed teachers, was loving their heart. We met, we talked, they had respect for the parents, and that made a great difference. So we do need more teachers. We also need teachers that are not aware they need to have the training. That's very important for them to have the training. And I'm praying for it all, that the secondary can do for my grandkids what Anna Yates does. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby. Any other public comment on this item? Ms. Williams-Moore, you're leaving. You're not making public comment. We understand you have to do homework. Thank you for coming. Double-checking, any other public comment on this item? Any further board comment or discussion? This was a discussion item. Thank you, Ms. Steele, for your presentation. Superintendent, you want to introduce the next item?
Sure, thank you very much. Good evening again, everyone. Tonight, we have Ms. Pam Shaw here with us tonight to give us some information about the YMCA and our program here at the district's office. Thank you, Ms. Shaw.
I need to use the microphone, I'm sorry. So I may want to, just using this then. Thank you. Hi, thank you. This is my annual- you. Hi, thank you. This is my annual, usually a dog and pony show to just tell you where we're at, what we're doing. And it's funny because as I was putting the presentation together, I put nothing about the partnership with special ed, knowing that Dr. Steele was going to be presenting. But it's such, and it's just part of who we are right now. We have integrated the children with disabilities, with IEPs, into the program as though they're there, that they're always there. And the special ed teaching staff, the speech therapists, psychologists, everybody is just part of the team and works closely with our team to make it work. And we're loving it and we hope we'll be able to continue it forever. So we're very excited about it. I'm going to give you a little bit of information about our program and what we're doing and what we're up to and where we're headed. So demographically, we're serving 44 preschool children and 16 toddlers. Toddlers are about 10 months to three years of age. Fifty-seven percent of the preschoolers are Emeryville or 94608 Oakland residents and 38% of the toddlers. Part of that is the toddler classes new this year and there were some kids that were slated to come here and hopefully in future years it'll be a higher and higher percentage of Emeryville residents. We are serving Emeryville children at our other centers in Berkeley. Five pregnant women with brand-new babies are served at our home-based model and they are slated to come into a new classroom that's starting here in the fall for babies. Twelve infants and toddlers and 19 preschool children. And these are all served by either ourselves or Berkeley Unified through a contract with us. Demographically, we're about 59% African-American, 24 Latino, 9% Asian, 7% white, 2% biracial. It's a nice diverse group of kids and families. Languages spoken, about 36% speak a language other than English with Spanish being the primary language, followed by Punjabi and Arabic. Our staff reflect the demographics of the kids and families and speak those languages as well. We're serving three foster children, three homeless families. Seven of the children have IEPs or IFSPs. Parent education levels, we look at parent ed levels because when you're looking at preschool and you're looking at outcomes for children, we clearly look at where our parents are coming from. And 14% are less than high school educated. That's a fairly high amount. And we look closely at that because we want to make sure that those kids get what they need and the parents get the ability to work with their kids at home because we only have them for part of the day. And that's, you know, even if they're here all day long through childcare, they still need support at home. Forty-two percent have high school or GEDs, 32% some college or advanced training, 11% with a BA and one parent has an advanced degree. Each year, we do an evaluation through both Head Start and our state funding. We do an early childhood environmental rating scale, looking at the physical environment. We use a tool called CLASS, which assesses classroom interactions between adults and children. We look at desired results as our child assessment tool that the state requires, and I'll give you some information about that. We conduct a family survey and we develop quality improvement plans based on this. And then we report it to the state every year and they tell us how great we're doing or we tell them how great we're doing. The areas of focus are five major areas of development. I'm just going to skip through that. One of the things we do is every year we set target goals for our children to see where they're at in terms of school readiness. So these are the four-year-olds going into kindergarten or TK in the fall. And they're broken down. We select seven, eight, six target areas each year that we look at in all areas of development. We look at a fall baseline. We do a mid-year assessment and then a spring assessment. You know, we were surprised this year by how low the scores were both starting and how high they were towards the end of the year, but they're not where we want them to be this year. Usually we like seeing the spring assessments in the 90 percentiles or above that even. And what happened this year is the kids started so much lower in the fall. We don't usually see kids coming in with no conflict negotiation skills. And what it says to us is a lot of these kids were not in preschool before. This is their first year of preschool. They've not been with other children. Or they speak a language other than English and they're transitioning into English. But to have zeros for letter and word knowledge and for conflict negotiation, that's pretty low to start the school year off with. And so we look at that and we see these children have made massive progress during the course of this year. And hopefully many of these kids will be with us through the summer so that by fall they'll be really ready for kindergarten.
Can you explain those numbers? I'm sorry.
Sure.
So what does a 10% on the baseline represent?
So 10% of the children of the four-year-olds that will be going to kindergarten in the fall scored at like the highest levels. So what we would consider like passing levels for impulse control, which is a targeted item on the assessment tool. Looking at how children can sit, can share, can do certain things.
So 10% of your students?
10% of the students when they came in in the fall and 72% by the end of the year of the four-year-olds.
And this is coming off the DRDP?
Yes. Yeah. Same thing for conflict negotiation, concepts about print, letter word knowledge, problem solving, classification, personal care routines. The teachers do the assessment. It's based on observation and communication with the parents. So the center director was going to be here, but her daughter's graduating Berkeley High this week and there's lots of activities going on and she couldn't be here. But the staff do what's called a project approach with the children. So in addition to the regular curriculum, it's, there are some special project things based on what children really like and they kind of draw the line. So this was in the toddler classroom. They were doing a paper project and this is how the teachers introduced all concepts about paper. And, you know, I wish she were here to explain better what was happening because it looks just like they're playing in snow. But when you start talking about the shapes and the sizes and the colors and the textures of different types of paper, these are kids that are a year and a half old and are learning the languages around that and words and vocabulary and concepts around it. They're doing garden project. I don't know if you've been outside to see the playground. We have a brand-new, beautiful playground that was funded by both state, local first $5 and federal dollars. And we band-aided a playground that is just gorgeous outside. And the kids are planting their own garden. We've got some special garden funds in addition to that through City Slicker Farms that came out and does work with the kids. And their fruit and vegetables were kind of awesome. Their tomatoes were just killer too this year. And now they're planting flowers. Kids learn very young to start writing and to use paper and pen in their classroom. The four-year-olds or, you know, the preschoolers sign in themselves. The parents have to sign in and then there's a separate sign-in sheet for the preschoolers to do. So they're learning how to write their names and sign in and identify themselves, starting with the youngest kids, actually. And then they do cooking projects in the classroom. We have our little cowboy dress up that day, I guess. But I don't know what they were making. It looks like something with tortillas, I think, was what it wound up with. On the family survey, 99% of the families were satisfied or very satisfied with the program. And we know who that other 1% was and we're dealing with them. So the only concerns and comments that they made were, you know, every parent of a different language wants somebody in their classroom who speaks the language of the children. That's the ideal situation. And if we could hire people who are trilingual, quadrilingual, we'd love it. And they want longer hours of operation, which we're actually doing in the fall. We're extending the hours. Right now, we're open from like 8:30 to 4:30 and in the fall, we'll be here from 7:30 to 5:00. Yay for the parents. Sad for the staff. What the future holds. This is the first year that I can report that our federal and state funding is stable. And not only is it stable, we got new money this year. Early childhood is very lucky, both in the state and federal budgets, and we hope it'll stay. There's a bill pending on the governor's desk right now to expand state preschool. And we hope that we will be able to expand those services. We will be adding an infant classroom, starting in the fall, with eight children from birth to, I think the oldest in that room is slated to be about eight months old. And these will come right out of our Pregnant Moms program and the priority will be for Emeryville 94608 residents. We will continue participation in what's called the Quality Improvement and Rating System. And this is a system that outside assessors come in and evaluate our program based on all of those things that we evaluate ourself on. We scored fours in this center, which is, the highest score you can get is a five. And, and the four is like the highest, there's only three programs in the county at that point in time that we were assessed that scored fours and we were one of them. So we're very proud of the work that our staff is doing out here. They're really quite amazing. And we hope to coordinate more with them.
Can you give me that?
The rating system is a one-to-five rating system. We scored fours. And it's based on teacher qualifications, center director qualifications, class scores, looking at adult-child interactions, the environmental rating scale scores, health and safety inspections. There's a whole slew of things and they rank each one.
Including your outcome scores, as it were.
Including our child outcome scores and how we work with special education students, all of those things.
And how many, you said you were one of three?
One of three programs in the county when we were assessed that scored at that level. Out of 20-something programs that were assessed.
Okay.
And now we're going through, we finished the pilot program. We were one of the 24 pilot sites in the county. And now we're going on to just being a regular program now. So we've had two years of quality rating and improvement system for this site. As a result of scoring at the level four, it means that for each state preschool student enrolled in this program, we are getting an additional $680 per child that we can spend almost any way we want to. And I've chosen to give it to staff because we don't have annual COLAs and they really work hard. And so we're looking at giving stipends to all of the staff people. So.
Do you know if ECDC was included in the?
They weren't in the pilot. And I don't know, they have a small state preschool program and I don't know if they're participating yet. They've had some administrative turnover and I think once things settle down there, they will participate because it's in their best interest to do so.
Okay. Thanks.
So, and we hope to develop a birth-to-five plan that's in permanence for the center in the site here. We will continue to work with special education and we're also looking at a birth, an infant development program for infants with disabilities so that we can catch them before they even hit preschool, so that there's a birth-to-five system in place here that serves Emeryville families where they are rather than having to go to Oakland or Berkeley or even further away to get the services that they need. So it's exciting. And that's Ariana with the toddlers. Ariana is a UC Berkeley student who has been a volunteer here all year. She's a social welfare major. She speaks Spanish and she's been volunteering here, I think, four days a week for the entire school year. So, and she's actually subbing for us this summer as a paid substitute. So we're kind of excited. So any questions or comments?
I have the same question that I asked earlier is, what is the cost to our parents or how do we, are we able to place kids with special needs for free at your program?
Yes. So we have Head Start funds, federal preschool dollars, and we have state preschool dollars as well for all of the kids' birth to five. And so there's no charge to parents for the child development piece of the day. If parents stay and need childcare, it's based on their income and family size. So there may be fees associated in the afternoon part of the day, not during the special, anytime in the morning when special ed kids would be here.
Okay.
So there's no fees for families unless they choose to use the extended-day childcare and then it would be based on their family size and income.
Right. So they don't have to apply for the Head Start program or anything? They can just be enrolled directly? I'm sorry.
We enroll them simultaneously in all the programs. It's, it's a try and triple enrollment for the children with IEPs.
And if parents don't qualify at the income levels for the Head Start?
For Head Start, it's not an issue because we can take 10% over income. It's an issue with state preschool if they're over income with that. We serve them anyway. We just enroll them in Head Start and the Head Start will pay their fees.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by 10% over income?
So Head Start, the income limitations are federal poverty. So that's like 23,000 for a family of four.
Right.
So we can take 10% over income. So 10% of our total enrollment, we have 400 kids. So 40 kids can be served at any income level. And those slots are reserved for children with IEPs or IFSPs.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Four hundred is, is?
Is our total number at?
Total.
Five centers that we directly operate and three that we contract with Berkeley Unified.
Right. So the scores of four and the class scores, are those at this site?
That's just for this site.
Okay.
Yes. Although all of our centers scored fours or fives.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I thought nobody scored.
We work hard. Nobody scored five in the pilot, but we just got assessed for this year in the first year of the regular program. And we had two centers, infant centers actually, that scored fives. It's pretty cool.
Do you have, is there a demand to expand at this site?
Yes.
And?
Particularly from people who live in Oakland.
Uh-huh.
So.
Is there a space constraint to do so?
Yeah. I mean, I could talk about what my fantasy is for this center, but I don't know that you're ready to hear it.
You're here, might as well.
So when, I think it goes back several superintendents ago that we started a discussion about birth-to-five in Emeryville and created a plan that would turn this center into a birth-to-five home for the city of Emeryville. And, and so that's my plan, hopes and dreams for this site, that once the district offices move out, that this becomes a birth-to-five center that provides parent education, training, support, everything that families need, community college classes in early childhood and literacy, second language kinds of work. Continues to work with special education and early intervention programs, provides health services here. At one of our other centers that's large, we have Kerry's Kids, which is a health program, volunteers through Children's Hospital for homeless and under, underinsured families. So once a month, they come out and do dental exams, vision exams, physical exams, immunizations, and it's for kids under 18. So we're hoping that we can bring Kerry's Kids here as well and offer those kinds of services for children, families in the community that need it. So.
Well, it's an exciting vision. Thank you for sharing it.
You may make it a reality anytime you like.
All right. Well, let's, let's keep talking.
Okay. I'll be back anytime. Thank you so much.
Oh, there was, I've heard, I've heard some rumor about, I think it's more in the rumor, there's some neighbors who are, who are upset about noise complaints. Can you tell us what, what the issue is and how you've responded to it?
Some neighbors here that don't like children, it seems. Yeah.
I can expand on it too, if you'd like. Pam, Michelle, you can correct me if President Apple, if you don't mind.
Sure. Go ahead.
Talking with him lately as well.
Yeah, maybe you have more direct information.
Well, we may have the same information. I, I think Michelle's been dealing with him longer than I have. We have some neighbors directly behind the playground area who happen to work from home. And I think that they're finding that the fact that they happen to rent a place that is directly off of a child's, children playground, playground for children is, is difficult for them. They have asked at different times that, you know, do the students always have to be on this end? Can't they sometimes be on that end? And so I have agreed to allow them to contact me so we can assess how things are going when they feel like the noise level is high. And I recently was in contact with one of them who said, "Do you hear how loud that is?" And I did alert them to the fact that the children were all the way down the other end. And they said, "Oh, I guess that theory just went out the window." So I said, you know, I think, you know, my understanding of Michelle's program, the program that we have is that the kids are in different places along the back area, not just in one area. But I think that it's, it's proven to be difficult for some of the residents who happen to work from home.
And we have actually requested to meet with them and to look at our schedules so that we can adjust our schedules if there's critical times during the day that noise is really a critical factor. I know some of these people are musicians and it really disturbs them, the noise level. We've invited them to come in and do music with the kids, which some of them have over the last year. But they'd rather go to the superintendent than talk to us directly, I think, these days, or maybe, you know, other ways. But we would love to, you know, meet with them and, and work out a schedule, a system. You know, we want to be good neighbors. We don't want to cause problems in the community. We have this wherever we are. I mean, kids make noise.
They, they did ask if the students could be moved to the parking lot and I did explain that it wouldn't be safe to have them playing out here in the wrong cars.
Probably not a good idea.
Probably not a good idea.
And our $80,000 playground is not going to waste.
Other board member comments or questions?
Nope, just excited.
We're lining, lining up the next, the next student.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Do we have a public comment on this item? No, seeing none. Okay. I think we're going to move on to the next item then. Ms. McDonald, I think we have another item in front of you.
Oh, I have one more item in front of you, Ms. McDonald. Mr. Cast. So good evening again, everybody. We have Mr. Cast here tonight who has a proposal for some ideas that he'd like to share with the school board. Thank you, Mr. Cast, for coming. Sorry I didn't get back to you.
That's all right. It'll work out.
You want to temporarily put that down? Yeah, you can, you can. I think it's fine. Yeah.
Good evening, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board and those out here. I live right next door to Annie Yates. And I really are concerned for Annie Yates and want to see the students be successful. I'm a retired school teacher. I taught in China, all levels, including graduate students. I taught in China, all levels, including graduate students. And sometimes I substitute teach in Oakland. I want to present three propositions that I am certain will help our students to succeed in school. Okay, I'm certain about these things. The first proposition that I'd like us to consider is more exposure to information and instruction. Right now, we have 180 days out of 365. That's only half a year. Add another half a year. It's called, you know, year-round school, right? And, you know, researchers are pointing out that children have this incredible learning window. If you've taught, they're like sponges, right? You know, and that would be like, for our sake, kindergarten, well, you know, for our sake, would be kindergarten to the beginning of high school. It's about eight years. Well, add a half a year to each one of those years and you're adding four more solid years during this window of learning. We're missing out on something. This is fantastic. Our scores would go through the roof if we did this. Now, consider this for math, for example. Instead of one hour, two hours. Can kids stand two hours? Well, the first hour would be your traditional math, right? The second hour, you know, after a cookie break, the second hour would be math, boosters, puzzles, riddles, games, pure math delight. Same thing like, something like this could be done in science. Okay? And do this in Anna Yates. You'll see a big change. I am certain of it. Excuse me, computer. But think about the possibilities. More time, more information, more instruction, and more delight. The second recommendation that I like to make right now is that we consider performance pay. Pay high-performing teachers. But the pay has to be significant, okay? It can't be chump change. You know, Portland, Maine starts teachers out that are in this program, 40,000 a year, okay? And then through graded stages, when they reach the exceptional level, they get 80K. For us, it might be 90, okay? Hey, that's pretty good, you know? That'll, listen, that's going to bring to us gifted teachers. And the other thing is Obama, President Obama's Education Secretary did say that performance pay is their highest priority. Another proposition that I'd like to make to the board and to you people and to those that are going to be listening on the internet is parent choice in connection with BART. Let's talk about parent choice for a moment. It's a credit given to parents. It's the amount of money to educate their child at a school, at any public school that they choose for one year. The major objection to this, coming from the National Education Association, is cost. That is, you know, they're saying, well, you're going to be sending them out to public schools outside the district and to private schools, but as I already said, we would only do it within public schools. But cost is a valid objection. There are some issues here. And let's take a look at locally how this might play out, the cost matter, in a cost-benefit I suppose we'd have to figure maybe 15% of our students might exit. The benefit would be for the students that are exiting. In their case, they're going to be able to find a school that fits their needs. Now, the cost for us is we're going to lose ADA, okay? And that's not, that's not very nice, right? I mean, that's, that's our bucks. We need it. Well, later on, I'm going to address this issue, okay? Because I think there are solutions. Now, this is parent choice in connection with BART. BART would take students from one school district to schools in that district maybe or to schools outside that school district that are chosen by the parent, okay? Maybe by them too. You know, BART is a fantastic tool. It's right in our back door. We could use it. You know, I get on the bus when I substitute teach sometimes at Oakland Unified and see charter students going from Oakland, sometimes down to San Leandro. So, they love that BART, you know? It's a great tool. Now, the objection to that is that this would be something like forced busing, okay? So, we have a response to that though. And by the way, as I go over this, we're going to be seeing how we might be using BART in this venture. Let's take, for example, the Fremont line, the one that goes from Oakland to Fremont, seven or eight school districts along there with about 100 schools. And there's enough time for, let's say, students from Oakland to get down there, about 15 minutes to get there in time for class, and for them to come up here to Anna Yates. And I want to talk about that. But back to the objection in regard to parents and schools feeling that they're being forced into this BART venture, bringing in outside students. Let's think for a moment. The odds are great that in larger school districts with a, with a great number of schools, there's going to be one or two schools that might really like the idea and get along with it. It's just a matter of odds with the larger school districts. We could just start with the larger school districts and do some of the medium-sized school districts like, well, there's Union School District down there by Fremont. There are seven or eight schools in that. You know, the odds that one out of seven schools might go along with this are pretty good. And it doesn't have to be school districts. It could be just grades. It could just be a grade, you know? And the lower grades, first, second, and third grade are the key to a child's success. Let's do a lower grade. And, you know, there are hundreds of lower grades in Union Unified, so the odds are going to be fantastic that some of these schools are going to really want to get into this, okay? So, this could be for all lines. I mentioned the Fremont line, but it could be for other lines. There are four or five BART lines that could be used. How about a pilot? You don't have to just jump into this. You could just try it in a very minor area of maybe one or two schools and, you know, see how it works and then work out the kinks. Now, I said earlier that I was, we were going to address the exodus of students that we might be faced with under parent choice. First of all, there has to be state, local cooperation on this. We could never do this by ourselves. We would have to have an agreement that the state would offset losses that we have. That's reasonable, isn't it? So, this is a kind of a political, I know it's a political issue. This is a political matter that would have to be settled at that level. The other thing is BART. If BART can take our students out there, it can also take out there to here, right? For the Emeryville Center for Community Life. This can really attract outside students if you have some great stuff going on in it. Well, so far, I've seen game room, art and music studio, theater, and so on. So, let's make that place fantastic. Make it a place where kids would love to come. So, here we are. Add another year. That's going to amount to four more years. Can you believe that? Get a handle on that. Four more years of instruction for elementary kids? Four more years of instruction? That will make a world of difference. They will love math and science. I know they will. Put them together, do all this fun stuff. High merit pay. And finally, parents select, allow parents to select a school that's best for their child using BART. And remember, BART can bring them out there here to Anna Yates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cast. Appreciate your taking the time to come and talk with us, share your thoughts. Do we have any comments or questions from board members?
No.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Mr. Weiner.
I'd like to appreciate you for coming up. That was very thoughtful of you. Thank you. Merit-based pay, just think of Atlanta and everything that happened there. So, yeah, just want to make sure that's out there.
Okay. Thank you for representing. Any other public comment on this item? Ms. Cosby.
Some things, opinion, my opinion, some things are great for some places, but I don't think some of the things that I've just heard would be the ideal thing for Emeryville. Emeryville is a small community, one K8, a pre-K8 now, one high school. We're trying to build to service the students that we do have. And they're really, 100%, hasn't been really shown that year-round school make a student smarter. I mean, most kids that's going to learn, really learn within that frame. Now, summer school, yes, that helps a lot that didn't quite make it through that school year. And I just think Emeryville is not the place for the things that I just heard. Somewhere else maybe, but not Emeryville. And plus, some parents like to spend time, as I do. I like to spend time with my family, my husband, myself, and all of us. There's a lot of things that we do. I'm a strong believer in the Lord. We have that, we work into our curriculum as well, which also makes any child around well. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Of you?
Yes. I'm just wondering, what do you think about the idea of parents being able to choose a school if they're not satisfied with, you know, what's happening to their child, to be able to, you know, be free to choose another school that they hear is a fantastic school and has fantastic teachers? Being given that opportunity, what do you think about that?
You know, I'm sorry, Ms. Cosby.
Please let me answer.
Okay. But this is a conversation probably for you two to continue on your own instead of during the board meeting time. But I, you have 20 seconds.
Okay. My strong belief is that any parent, anybody in your own neighborhood, you ought to build your own house first. Stay, work with the peoples in your community to make the best for your kids, for your life where you stay at, then go outside.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment on this item? No? Okay. All right. We're on to our Local Control Accountability Plan. Again, thank you, Mr. Cast, for coming forward. You want to introduce the item, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you again. Good evening. The purpose of this item is to ask the board to review the updated LCAP for your first reading and make recommendations to staff in preparation for possible final approval at our June 24th meeting. And we have Ms. Lori McDonald making her first-ever official school board appearance this evening.
Welcome, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you.
Lisa will give you a hand, Ms. McDonald.
I am going to just give you a 35,000-foot view just real quick in order to orient you to the current 1516 LCAP that tonight is the public hearing for, what's the public hearing for? And then we can go into details about the content, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about the, about the document that you're, that you've looked at, that we sent you. The first thing to note is that it is different. And why is the 1516 LCAP different? The first reason, there are two big ones. One is there are four major shifts that have occurred in the last year. The one is that the district has new goals, district goals that were incorporated into the LCAP. The district also has new leadership, both at the site level and at central office. The LCAP template itself shifted, and that wasn't just a layout issue. It actually has you focus on, on the plan in different ways. So, that was important for us. There are also the metrics and the conditions of learning and the 27 metrics that last year were optional from the state that this year are required. So, those four shifts impacted the work as we were looking at it. The other thing is that we looked at last year's LCAP, and since this is really an authentic improvement process, the state made their changes and we also looked at last year's LCAP and thought there are, we can do better in terms of creating a more cohesive vision for the programs to serve the district. So, the shifts and then looking at the LCAP from last year led us think we, that there were some things we could do in order to increase alignment throughout the whole document. So, that is, those are the major reasons for the shifts and the changes in this year's LCAP. I want to give you just an overview of the structure so that it will help in the analysis of it. The first part, let's see, section two. Wait, hold on. Uh-oh. This is possibly, sorry.
You can use your...
It's an animation issue. So, can I just show you the slide like this? Yeah? Okay. It will lack the, you know, the flying in and stuff, but you're okay with that. So, there are, there are four major sections to the LCAP. Section one will talks about the stakeholder engagement. Section two, that's the main, the main part for this year, which we'll talk about in a minute. Section three is about the use of funds specifically for the unduplicated students. And section four reiterates in prose what you did to serve the, with the supplemental and concentration money. Highlighting section two is important. There are two main sections. The annual update, oh gosh, I'm just, I really pride myself on being kind of animation savvy with this thing, but not so tonight. You're, is, we're not getting graded on our, no. Good to know. Okay, section two, the annual update has basically four sections. The expected outcomes and then the actual outcomes, the planned actions and services, and then the actual outcomes and services. And so, that is quite a lengthy portion. And so, that is quite a lengthy portion of the document. The other part of section two are the goals, actions, and expenditures. This is the part of the new template. In that section, there are three goals that we address. We talk about needs, and those have to be data-informed. Either data that we've gathered from the district or research that we've done that is currently informing our thinking. We have to have measurable outcomes, and then we talk about actions and expenditures. So, that's the bulk of the section for this year. Okay, can I just see if this one works? Okay, that's all right. I mean, I'm just talking to myself now, saying, "It's all right." Like, don't panic. There's one more major issue besides all that I've just mentioned in terms of the shifts. The other thing is that we have to address these eight conditions of learning in the LCAP. Basic services, state standards, parent involvement, pupil achievement and engagement, school climate, course access, and other student outcomes. And in true bureaucratic fashion, eight conditions of learning wasn't enough. They turned those into 27 metrics, all of which have to be addressed specifically in the LCAP. So, we took these 27 metrics and did the, sort of the revision for this year so that we would have them all covered. Well, this was, this isn't going to work because it has a little thing. Doesn't matter. Okay, so, all of that, the diverse elements I just mentioned went into creating some alignment for this year's LCAP. And that's what you're looking at. Okay, so, that's it in terms of the overview. The content itself, it, well, imagine if I had tried to do a PowerPoint now that didn't work, where we had to read it like this. So, the content itself is the bulk of what would be of interest to you. And we are happy to take questions about the content at this time.
Yeah, I do have lots of comments and questions, but I'm going to hold mine till after public comment. But if there are some kind of top-level clarifying questions from other board members, then we should take those now. I'm not seeing anyone rush. Are you looking to see if you do, Mr. Mayor?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, all right. Do we have any public comment on the LCAP item? Yeah, Mr. Weiner, sure. Yeah, come on up so we can get you on camera and mic for viewers at home.
Hi, viewers at home. Just, I know the engagement part. I don't remember if the high school staff did an LCAP meeting with Ms. Allen when she was principal before she left, or if that was last year, and I'm wondering, because we haven't had any talk about LCAP this whole year in any PDs or anything like that. There's been no follow-up. Also, I know some of the items that were put in the LCAP, like a PBIS stipend, which I saw in the paper, never came to fruition. And so, like, where is the accountability with what's in the LCAP and what's actually coming out of it?
Okay.
And the engagement. I'm really curious, like, who's coming up with all these answers? Who's being talked to? And I know you guys don't control all that, but like, we never see district-level employees at the high school. I know I've seen Rubio at there during hours three times this year. Might have been there more, but that's one I've seen. So, where is the high school's input coming in?
Got it. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Maybe you can start with talking about what if any engagement took place at the high school, responding to that. You should come back up because we're going to have questions for you. Yeah, or he could do that too. Sure, but we still want you to come back. Let me just clarify, Mr. Weiner, the LCAP was brand-new last year. So, Ms. Allen was no longer principal. She was deputy superintendent when the LCAP requirement kicked in. So, this is just the second year that the state as a whole has been doing this LCAP. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, I thought you were referring to when she was principal in the first time around. Right. That's a good point. So, Dr. Rubio, you want to talk? Why don't you just generally talk about the engagement with the, since it's section one, the teachers at the high school at Annie Yates and the broader community?
I'd be glad to. The engagement, just a reminder or information if it's not known, the engagement process started last December with invitations that were US-mailed to all parents that were sent home as flyers in Spanish and English, and where teachers were invited to participate in a two-day visioning process in January. It was from that two days of work, which had a lot of staff and members of the high school present as well, that really helped us create those four new goals that we merged the first two. So, we have three, like we did last year in the LCAP, just to keep that the same. But that's where the engagement process started. Since that time, we have had public meetings where we have invited teachers and parents. We held one at Annie Yates, and we had parents and teachers participate. And we had one here at the district office, and one that included members of the citizen oversight committee. And we have also invited teachers and staff from both sites to participate in the ongoing action committees. We actually do have a couple of high school staff members helping with that. One is focused more on technology. One is focused more on student achievement and inquiry for next year, or teacher inquiry. So, we've had pretty broad engagement. We've been meeting with parents as well, again, in separate groups as two advisory committees in the last several weeks to, maybe not farther back than a month at this point. And then we'll be at the high school coming up. We're scheduling that to actually engage students. So, but there is one more thing. As I mentioned to President Affelt last week, we will also be sending this document. We wanted to come, the draft to come, the first reading to come tonight, but we're going to be sending this tomorrow or Friday to all teachers to allow the opportunity for any teachers to go through it, let us know. Because we've noticed, as Mr. Weiner actually pointed out, there were things that we said we were going to do that didn't happen. And there were some things that we did, that we, we still want to observe and assess how well we did. So, teachers will have that opportunity as well.
Okay. Other comments from board members or questions?
Can we get a better accounting of the engagement? Because I think, I heard a lot of things in there. I'm given pause by the idea that we're just now going to engage the high school students with, what, 10 days of school or less left? I'm not sure their minds are going to be focused on planning for the fall at this point. But I would love to see some sign-in sheets and, you know, working documents, maybe agendas or things, a little bit more full accounting of how actively we engage the community. I'm worried that if we have an entire site that felt left out, and I've, you know, that's not the first time I've heard that. I think we had this issue last year where, you know, the teacher voice was not a part of the LCAP, nor were students included. So, I think it'd be really great for the community to see that, you know what, we had these meetings. These are the people who attended. This is what was covered. You know, some sort of accounting of what was recommended and how that was folded in to the LCAP so we can really get a tracking of not just the finished document, but really the process. You know, I know, you know, I've written a couple of these. That's the wrong way to phrase that. I have participated in a very large, very cumbersome process that involves multiple meetings with multiple stakeholders. And we always have a very clear sort of sign-in process, agendas, you know, note-taking. And really, you know, we spent a lot of time with post-it notes, making sure we've captured each item. So, I'd love to see that. I'm concerned that we're starting with the visioning process, which, you know, I know others disagree with me, but I felt was a very exclusive process, not inclusive. And which also produced a document that I felt was really also exclusive, not inclusive, of our students. So, I'm concerned that that's the driving force behind that because that really is a top-down process, and the LCAP, to me, should be a, really a more collaborative thing. So, I'd love to see that accounting.
I think we can include that as an attachment to the LCAP if the board likes. We can add sign-in sheets and, from all of our meetings. I wouldn't agree with you about the inclusive versus exclusive piece of what you shared, but I'd be glad to add that if it's a will to the entire board. It's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we need to put the sign-in sheets with people's names on it. But I would, I think having an appendix that quantifies-
Numbers or-
Yeah, numbers of meetings, what the day, and we did that last year, I believe. And it was, it was more detailed. Then the meetings, the dates, the number of people that were there, you know, which constituency they were representing. I think something more detailed like that would be-
Sure, we can put that in the engagement, engagement section to lay it out.
Again, I'd like to see, I think, again, I just, I agree with Member Affelt. It doesn't belong in the LCAP. I'm saying I'd like to see the process. I'd like to have a view and to sort of map that all out and, you know, I don't want a summary. I want to see the working documents.
Would you, wouldn't?
Yeah, I'm happy to get them by email. That's fine.
Okay. Is that, is that fine with the board like that?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Ms. McDonald? Oh, okay.
Go away, Mr. McDonald.
All right. The, while we're on the engagement process, yeah, I mean, I, the, I too am concerned that we're coming at the students a little late, but, and we're trying to adopt a policy which we haven't yet formalized for the student engagement. So, you know, I don't know if we're, how you're thinking of engaging the students. But to the extent we can follow the proposed policy and get some, you know, real representatives from each grade level and, at a minimum, well, I want to go beyond that. But also, I mean, are you presenting this to student councils? Are you walking through the content with them? What's your plan for that conversation? And what, let me put it this way before you even have to answer. What, since I work with students and parents around LCAP development, what we have found helpful is to have some capacity-building training as part of the conversation and not just going in saying, "What do you want? What do you think of this?" But explaining, you know, what is this LCAP? What's the enterprise here, and what's your role in it?
I had a parent meeting recently, our parent advisory committee for the LCAP, and the first 45 minutes of the meeting was learning the acronyms. And it was, it was, it was a great work session, really incredible. All of those notes are captured on a shared document, which anybody can have access to. So, my intent for any of these meetings would be to do what I so, you know, did with such smoothness tonight, but to share kind of the overview and to share the acronyms that are involved. They were really interested in the connection between LCFF and LCAP, and then just some of the vision around shifts in education in general. Once we got those down, then we were able to look at some specifics in there, and the conversation was very rich. They gave input. In fact, the tutoring issue came up and wasn't in there, and so it was added to the LCAP. So, they, we are supposed to have not just feedback, but direct input into the plan. The great thing that, and I really also do regret not having the time to meet with the students yet, but it was a dynamic enough group, and they are committed, this group of parents, and we would like to grow it. It was a small group. But they're committed to coming back, and we set out our map to meet four times a year to see how we're doing. Not just to meet the compliance of the LCAPs, to do the annual review, but to see how are we doing. And that is because, and these meetings attest to that, that it really is just a bureaucratic hoop if we only do what's, you know, the complacency piece. But it's very exciting to think that we could engage students and parents and teachers and all the stakeholders in an authentic way to say, "How can we do better?" And that is what happened with the parents the other day. I wouldn't, I can do the work, the limited impact that I have. I can do better because of them the other day. I am assuming that that's also true with the students. So, we'll all give an overview. I'll keep good notes. It'll be more than just the complacency piece, just to meet, you know, whatever. That's my goal at least.
Okay. It sounds like you're heading in the right direction. How many parents are on the parent advisory committee, and how were they selected?
They, there were four, two from Annie Yates, two from the high school. They were selected, we, John, you probably, Dr. Rubio, you probably know better than I.
It was, outreach was made to all the parents who've been involved along the road since January to try to, to try to find as many parents as we could to involve. I know that we called many more than four, and we kind, Lori herself contacted many more than four. That was the number we were able to get to meet. And we've had parents, and we still have parents, meeting on the action committees and other groups, and you've been to some of the parent meetings. So, we went to the parents we've gotten to know in this six-month process since the visioning.
Well, we know more than four.
Yes, we do, and we were trying. And we have a larger group, just so you know, on the English language advisory group, which in part, thanks to an ongoing ELAC group that's been meeting, we have about a dozen parents.
Right. Well, so, we've got to, we've got to expand that going forward. And I think, you know, the way to do it is, you're on the right track. This board has indicated it wants to see the LCAP come in every quarter with an update along the same way. And so, I think aligning that with the parent advisory committee, so we're hearing from them,
Yeah.
what they think, and the students. So, they're educated, you know, quarter one, two, three, and four. By the time we get to June, it's not a last-minute thing.
Right.
These are sophisticated students who understand what they're doing and can give us, you know, the feedback that they've gone back to their populations and brought to us.
Can I make one more comment about engage?
Yes.
The thing about this document is that the state really, they're at their best at this moment. But they are really making us accountable for our stakeholder engagement. They, the county has our feet to the fire in terms of being real about that. In the annual update, we are honest about the fact that many of the teachers, it's in there, were surveyed, said they had never heard of the LCAP meetings. And so, there is transparency here. We come clean and say, "Yeah, they didn't even know." And when I started to rewrite it and talk to some major stakeholders, they, in terms of staff, they likewise didn't know about it. So, I think we did, we did better, and, but we can definitely improve in that.
Okay. Member Pat, are you trying to get a point?
Stretching my sleeve.
Okay, all right. The, so, I've got some big-picture points, and then I've got a ton of lesser points. And I don't, I don't know that the lesser points, it might be better to do those offline and sit down with you and the superintendent. But first of all, the, the conditions of learning, this is just a minor technical point. It only refers to three of the priorities. The, and it's, you know, if you look in the template, it's just A are the conditions of learning. The basic, the implementation of state standards, course access, and then there are a couple county ones. But those are the only conditions of learning. They're priorities, eight state priorities. So, that's, it's just a nomenclature thing, but it's, we're going to confuse the public if we refer to the eight priorities as conditions of learning because the state board has grouped three of the priorities and only three as conditions of learning.
That's not her.
Okay. But that's just very minor. The-
It was on some other, someone else's document, and it says the four conditions of learning. And it's on that document that you're looking at, there are four conditions of learning, but there really are only three.
If you look at it on page four of the LCAP, it's only really the first three that are, the others are pupil outcomes and engagement. Those are the three buckets that the board, state board has divided the eight state priorities into. Yeah. The, have you totaled up the total expen- Yeah. The, have you totaled up the total expenditures referenced in the LCAP? And how does that cor-? No, for everything, base supplemental concentration, and how does that correspond to our, oh, five or six million dollars of total LCFF expenditures? How much are we reflecting?
I thought that.
Our total expenditures in the LCAP.
That's a good question. In the very back of the document, and we just finished, Mr. Affleck, we just finished that this weekend. And so that's, that was one of the last pieces we did. So we haven't got to examine it closely. But in the very back of the document, on pages eighty-nine and eighty-eight, I believe, the template started to total those figures for us. Now, I have not yet been able to examine to what extent that reflects the entire district budget yet. So I'm not sure if it totals it at the bottom there or not.
Yeah, I couldn't find the exact answer to my question.
But I think I understand where you're heading.
Because there's not a all LCFF line. You have all funding sources. So you've got a baseline, which is good. It seems you're, if I'm reading that right, we've reflected four point two million dollars of five point five million dollars of base spending on page ninety-nine of the, the document.
That may be correct. I would need a little bit more time to analyze. We just, we just got these numbers in, I'm sorry.
Right. So, so, and I guess what, the, the point is that we should be, this is supposed to be a comprehensive planning document that, that is transparent. And even at four point two, we're way ahead of most, what most districts are doing in this. But, you know, I want to do it right. And we should be reflecting, in order to comprehensively plan, we, we need to be transparent about all of our expenditures and how we're spending all of our expenditure. We also do more, and you've done Title I stuff, you've referenced some parcel tax stuff, but it seems bits and pieces do, you know, ideally, we're, we're capturing all of our Title I and all of our Title III and, and all of the parcel tax. And if I had one to prioritize, I would say we should do what we did last year with the parcel tax. We had an attachment that explained to people how we were spending the parcel tax. And that funneled into different pieces of the, of the program.
Okay. So that could be attached or embedded. That'd be easier if we could do that.
We did it just as an appendix.
Okay.
You can put it in at the, but, but higher priority than parcel tax and the one we're legally required to do is to reflect all of the LCFF dollars, base supplemental and cons, that we're spending on the eight priorities. Now, if we're spending on, on some local priority, like we don't have to reflect that. But that's, I don't know what that would be because almost everything we do is going to fall under one of those eight priorities.
So you would imagine, I think I remember this conversation last year, that our entire budget should add up to.
To be pretty close.
Pretty close to the entire budget.
Yeah. I mean, post-employment, retirement is like an example that the state board is given of something that probably wouldn't show up in, in your LCAP. The, the actions that, that are laid out at, under each of the three goals at the different sections of the LCAP are just, this, this is supposed to be a three-year planning document rolling. And it's really a one-year planning document.
In its current form, yes.
Yeah. I see fifteen, sixteen actions and I see, and, what's the term I'm looking for? Our annual measurable objectives for, for the out years, years two and three are just replicated. It looks like we just cut and pasted what they are for fifteen, sixteen. We didn't sort of say, well, in year two, we're going to go a little further. In year three, we're going to go yet further. It just seems to be repeating what our one-year goal is. So we need, unless our, you know, our actions in year one are the same action we're going to do in year two, but our, still, I would think our goal would shift and we'd have a higher sight for year two.
Right.
But it, but anyway, I think we need to move this from a one-year to a three-year planning document.
We'll look at that.
Okay. Does that make sense, Ms. McDonald?
It does.
Okay, okay. The annual update is troubling in, in, in many respects. And I should say, let me start off with it. I, I agree that, that you've done a very good job of taking last year somewhat, somewhat disjointed or, or, you know, not necessarily well-aligned document and made it more aligned and comprehensive and logical. And you did that over the shift in the templates and, and, you know, underlying the thing you were reporting on. So that was a complicated thing. And I, I appreciate those, those movements you've, you've made. But the annual updates indicates we didn't do a lot of the things we said we were going to do. And that, that's, that's the troubling piece. And that, so I think, and this board has talked about it at the retreat, and I think, you know, we've already talked about it here tonight. We, we, we want to see, as you suggested, quarterly reports throughout the year, how are we doing, meeting our, our actions. So we're, we're keeping track. We're not just, you know, and this, it's on the board, too. We shouldn't just be looking at this in June and say, hey, did we do it? Because it's too late to know if we did it. But what that, I think, means is a practical matter is that there are many of the things that we did not do are, were supplemental concentration expenditures that we didn't expend because we didn't do it. And if we didn't do it, then we have a carryover obligation to track, what did we say, what did we get in supplemental concentration for the current year, fourteen, fifteen, that we didn't spend for those purposes? And then that needs to be a bookmark that goes into the years moving forward that we, we need to fulfill that obligation.
We are, we are doing that and we, we know it, we know what it is. Just a reminder to the board that there, and, and what I, may be the case, I'm not sure offhand, there were many, many suggestions for how to use supplemental concentration money. And then as a board, you ranked and ordered the top priorities and we stopped at a certain amount and we did those things. What I, what I believe may have happened is that the other items that were on the, what was called as the wish list at the time, were left in the plan. I'm not certain. I'd have to go back and look at that, but that maybe would happen because we, we only have a carryover of about forty-nine thousand dollars.
All right. Well, well, we, we, we can go over my notes from, from what I saw, but there were, you know, for example, eighteen thousand in, in after-school tutoring for six to twelve that we didn't do in supplemental funds.
I don't think the board voted to, that was not the top of the rankings.
You don't think it was in the top priority?
No.
Then why was it in our plan?
Well, that's what I'm suggesting is that I think those things were left in the plan.
Oh, I see. Really?
Yeah. What happened, you, you might recall is that there was a list of items that added up to about seven hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses. The board.
Remember that, you had two hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Correct. But the, I don't believe that there was an editing process to go back in and pull those other items out of the plan.
If, if that is the case, then, then we don't have that carryforward obligation.
We have a small amount.
Okay. But, so I guess I want to go over that with you.
Sure.
Closely. But I appreciate that you're, you're thinking about that.
Oh, yeah.
And, and how to, how to do that. The, section three, we need to do a better job on section three, which is, which is a really critical piece. That's the, where we both identify what our supplemental concentration, school-wide and district-wide programs are. And justify why we can, why we've chosen to do a school-wide or district-wide program. And we're a high-concentration district, more than fifty-five percent. Okay? You're excused if you need another breath of fresh air.
Just the ladies' room.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah. We, we also need in, in that section to justify why that action or service is principally directed toward high-need pupils' goals and, and why we think it's going to be effective. And in the annual updates in the future, we'll have to revisit that and say, well, gee, was it effective or not? Did we hit our goals, et cetera? But for now, and I didn't really see the justification, I didn't, we should see a list of, there must be thirty things we're spending supplemental concentration funds on. And it's sort of a summary without a justification. And it needs to be a list, it's identified each thing, and a justification, separate justification for, for each item that's been in that, put in that list. And I, I did have specific, I did take issue with some, some of the specific items that we have assigned to supplemental concentration spending. And, and we can, we can go over those individually. But, you know, an example that, that comes to mind was I think we're proposing to spend it on, like our, improving our SARB attendance, which strikes me as a, a sort of a core, basic thing we need to be doing. We're running a school, we're required by law to, you know, do attendance and make sure kids come to school and, and, you know, report the ones who aren't. And, and that, that's not a, something that's principally directed toward our high-need students. That's just something that we need to do for all students. So I, I wouldn't put that. And I'm not sure it's an increased or improved service. It's, it's what we should have been doing and a service we always should have been providing. So that's one example. Lastly, the, the parental involvement is one of the eight state priorities. And it actually has two dimensions that the, that are among the twenty-four that the state is looking for. We have, it seems to me, some goals and metrics around participation in programs, are parents coming, are they doing it, which is good. That's good. But we don't have any metrics along the other dimension that's required, which is parent participation and decision-making in the district. So we need to set some goals and annual measurable objectives that, that are around, like increasing our parent advisory council, going above and maybe we're going to meet four times a year. That's, that's a good goal. Let's put that in and track it. You know, functioning school site councils and PTOs and, you know, I don't want to limit it, but there are other metrics that we, we should be focused on for improving parent involvement. Those are my, those are my overarching points. Any, any questions or thoughts on that? Other, other board members? Anything else? Okay. All right. So let's set up time.
Yep.
And, and I, I don't want to take any more of the, time tonight on, on this item. I think we already had public comment on this, but.
Can I comment on something you brought up?
Uh, you may, since, yeah, the hour's late, but I don't think we'll be overrun by public comment.
You brought up the after-school tutoring and then it was mentioned that that was voted down as a priority or not put in as a priority.
It was a priority, it just wasn't one of the top ranking ones.
It wasn't in the top. I'd like to bring up, I did my master's in educational leadership last year. I surveyed in the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen school year, the current seniors and the recent graduates. And in that survey, I was focused on what made them successful going on to college. I focused on students who went on to college. And over fifty percent of the students in an open-answer question commented on after-school tutoring, which ended three years ago, but for the reas- oh, sorry. And that was for the recent graduates who had access to that most of their high school career, whereas thirty percent of the current seniors, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, commented on that. Second comment was supportive staff. But it just, I've been complaining for the last three years, probably to the wrong ears, that we need an after-school tutoring program. And if you look at the numbers in the report from the, this, this report, our, our current graduation rate this year is lower than it has been the last two. And these are kids who haven't had access to tutoring for three years. And it's, we're seeing a decline in the ability of our students. So I think maybe we should reconsider that after-school tutoring part to be a bigger point, especially when student voice has said, you know, massively, that's one of the reasons they were successful. And I just, I didn't think you guys were aware of that.
Yeah, appreciate the comment. And, and I don't, I know I read it somewhere because there's a lot here, but it's actually, the, the ranking that we were referencing was last year. The proposal in this year's LCAP, well, for fifteen, sixteen, is actually to, to bring in after-school tutoring. Is that right, Ms. McDonald? At the high school level? K, K-12? Certainly at high school level.
Certainly high school level. The parents are, it, it is coming up also for the EA, English Language Learner Parent Advisory Council. They have, they're, and it came up at the coffee with the principal a few months ago. They are really hoping for after-school tutoring. The request primarily has been around math.
It says, it says, action nine, action ten, students who are struggling academically will receive tutoring support, district-wide program, tutoring support, forty thousand dollars of concentration funding. So it, it seems to be in the current draft. Ms., Mr. Ferber, you want to, why don't you come up and make some comment for the folks at home?
Two things I had mentioned in, in my presentation, which was kind of short, was that we, we do have after-school tutoring coming in, in the fall. We have that in conjunction with our Odysseyware, which is our current recovery. Also, we have intensive intervention for our math and language arts students coming into ninth grade. So we have a few things in place that are going to really help our students. It will cost the district money, but certainly not the eighteen thousand. But it will, it's something we have built in that we're, that we're going forward with.
Yep. And, and some of those, the Odysseyware is in the, is in the plan and those are being reflected. But if it's not, we should let Ms. McDonald know and we'll.
I've been working with Ms. McDonald and Dr. Rubio and I, most of the things that we have in the LCAP that comes from our end has been either something we discussed at a staff meeting or we've carried it and agreed to bring it forward. I mean, Mr. Wainer was involved in the, in the master schedule process and he saw, he clicked on it himself, the intensive intervention slots for the classes we're going to do for the incoming ninth graders. So there's, there's a lot of things that we're moving toward and doing, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. We.
Thank you.
We'll, you know, to be continued, but we want to make the right investments. All right, I'm going to move us on to the next item, which is about our budget. Superintendent, you want to introduce?
Sure.
The next item?
Ms. Lewis, do you want to say something first?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lewis. Is this on the LCAP item?
It's on the LCAP item.
Okay. So we won't move on yet.
One thing that parents who have come through SST and Bible fours meetings over the past year, since we did not, since we discontinued the after-school programs, is the increased number of families and students who need those services. They need the after-school programs. They need the tutoring. And year after year, we've said, we don't have it, we don't have it, we don't have it. And it was placed in the, in the LCAP because there is a strong need for it. Currently, what has happened over the past two years is that teachers, out of the kindness of their hearts, are opening up their classrooms and staying at school until three, four, five, six o'clock in the evening, providing those services without charging the district one dime. And it's happened over and over and over and over again. The elementary school desperately needs after-school programs. We used to have them. They haven't been in existence for a while. We used to have them, they haven't been in existence for a while, and so there's an increase in the amount of students who come through student success because they need those programs. So please look at that for all the students, not just the, the high school students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to the budget item.
Good evening. Again, the purpose of this item is to present to the board the budget for the 2015-16 school year for our first reading. Ms. Doris Sue presenting tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we are going to look at the first reading of our 1516 budget. Okay, so the budget goals, the goals of the budget is to maintain a balanced budget for Emory School District for 1516, and making sure that we are in fiscally sound condition. And now let's look at the income side of the 1516 projected budget. And you can see, you can see on this slide, it showed you the income of the different sources, unrestricted, restricted, and the total. So for LCFF, we are projected to receive five point nine million dollars, federal income two hundred and seventy-one thousand, other state income six hundred and seventy-three thousand, local income two point eight million, and the SALPA transfer in to the special ed program is three hundred and seventy thousand, for a total of ten point, ten point zero six million dollars. And on the expenditures, certificated salary is going to cause us four point five million dollars, classified salary seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, health and welfare and the fringe benefits, two point four million dollars, books and supplies, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, contracts and services, one point seven million, indirect costs, negative twenty-six thousand, for a total expenditures of nine point six seven million dollars. And, and on to that, the transfer out, which is the general fund contribution to the food services, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, contributions to the restricted program, nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So you will see there is an increase of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to the ending fund balance. And now the fund balance, it listed the beginning balance as of July first, two thousand and fifteen, for a total of two point three million dollars in the general fund, and then after adding the a hundred and thirty-three thousand that we looked at before, and then we are projected to get a ending fund balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, at two point four five million dollars. And on this slide, you will see the components of the ending fund balance. And part of it, I want to point out, is the four percent minimum requirement on the reserve is come to three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. And the contributions, these are the programs that projected to require general fund support, the special ed program, six hundred and nine thousand, ongoing maintenance, three hundred and six thousand, so it come to a total of nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Another thing that I want to point out on this slide is regarding the ongoing maintenance. In fourteen fifteen, the state required is a minimum of one percent of your total district, total expenditures, it got into the ongoing maintenance, but starting in fifteen sixteen, the one percent now is back to three percent. So that means three percent of your total district expenditures has to be spent on the ongoing maintenance. So that's the reason why you will see a big jump. Before, in fourteen fifteen, I believe is over a hundred thousand, but right now you see a three hundred and six thousand, because this is the minimum three percent reserve, I mean, not reserve, the minimum three percent, the ongoing maintenance that we have to contribute for maintaining the school site. And then now let's look at the multi-year projection. So that, on the second column, enlisted the two thousand and fifteen sixteen budget, and also the two subsequent years, sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen. It gives you the income, the expenses, and as you can see again, in sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen, you will see the expenses over the income, which telling you that we are back in structural deficit on those two subsequent years. The reason why we are not in a structural deficit in fourteen fifteen and fifteen sixteen is because of the journal entry that we mentioned in the last time during deferred interim, that we can able to do those journal entry of the custodian salary and benefits from the general fund to the RDA money. So that helps on the general fund. But starting in sixteen seventeen, we are no longer able to do that, so that's why you see the structural deficit is back on the book. But again, that period slide that right here is only a summary version, the detail is on the legal size spreadsheet that we have uploaded on the board package. And we will go over the assumptions on that NYPD later on. And in here, see there's no deficit spending in fifteen sixteen, but there you will see the deficit spending coming back in the two subsequent fiscal years. But after all, we are still able to make that four percent minimum reserve in all three years, as you can see on the multi-year projection. So before we go on to question, I want to get out here and then look at the assumptions. Lisa, can you able to help me to pull this up?
And Doris Sue, while Lisa's coming up, I'll just mention, I think the board may already know, but some of your, some of your important assumptions are, and I've mentioned this board recently, we have a cap on benefits right now for all employee groups, including management. So one of your assumptions is that the school district is not providing an additional higher amount for benefits for any of our employee groups going forward, that we're sticking with the caps that we currently have negotiated in our contract.
That's right, and actually, that is the reason why I do want to go over the assumption sheet with the board, so that they know exactly what kind of assumption that I base on in each of the year. And that's how, how, that's how do I come up with those numbers on the spreadsheet. So now, on this board item that Lisa uploaded, this is regarding assumption that I used to base on my multi-year projection. The part that I really want to point out is regarding, you can see, it listed the, like the first item, the annual caller for each year, and so on, but the, the item that I want to point out here is regarding the enrollment. The enrollment, in the third interim, I was using the five years average last time, but this time on the enrollment, I want to point to the board that you can see a six ninety-five all along, all four years. So I am based on the assumption that we are at least maintaining our current enrollment. And the six ninety-five is the CalPAC certification number for fourteen fifteen. So the undubricated count, we are going to keep at seventy-four point nine six percent. And the ADA number is the P two number for fiscal year fourteen fifteen. So we kind of mentioned the custodian salary and benefit to the RDA money in fourteen fifteen, and fifteen sixteen, you can see is three hundred and sixty-three thousand in fourteen fifteen, and projected to be three hundred and sixty-one thousand in fifteen sixteen. But another thing that I want to point out to the board is regarding the stirs and perts. See the rate, it really causing a big burden on the district. The rate is coming up from eight point eight eight percent to all the way to fourteen point four three percent in seventeen eighteen. And the perts is eleven point seven seven percent right now, all the way to sixteen point six percent. And then the health and welfare, which is what Dr. Rubio mentioned earlier, the multi-year projection is based on there is no more any future increase in premium on the health and welfare will be picked up by the employee. So that's the reason why it said here, there should not be any change or any increase for the next three years, fifteen sixteen, sixteen seventeen, and seventeen eighteen, compared to this current school year fourteen fifteen. And then what could come is, is going to be one point eight eight percent to two point one eight percent in the next free school year. And then on the next page, it kind of give you an idea of how much money that we are going to expect to receive from the state. On the state A, it listed all the one point three million in fourteen fifteen, one point eight in fifteen sixteen, and close to two point one in sixteen seventeen, and two point three million in seventeen eighteen. But again, this number is already including the supplemental and concentration. But I do want to brought to you how much of the supplemental and concentration that we received in fourteen fifteen, which is four hundred and forty-eight thousand, but it's going to jump to eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand in fifteen sixteen, and one million in sixteen seventeen, and one point one million in seventeen eighteen. The EPA, which is the property...
Before we move on, Doris Sue, the, that state aid line, which is the combined base and supplemental concentration, that's, that's, that's the increase in our, or that's the total LCFF dollars that we're going to get?
That's right.
Because you just, I thought you just reported, and another point, we're getting five or six million a year in LCFF total dollars.
This is the exact amount we are going to project to receive in each of the different school year. Under the new...
That's LCFF total?
Yes.
We're just, we're reporting our base funding in the back of this LCAP as...
Five point...
Yeah, five point five million dollars. And I, yeah, I know we get more than, I know, I know our LCFF total this year is four or five million dollars in fourteen fifteen.
Well, the, I, I...
So that's why I thought, is that the increase? Is that the...
No, the, if you're talking about the LCFF money, it consists of the state A, it includes the EPA, it includes the property taxes. So LCFF is just the valor of a different number of sources.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. So you got to add the property taxes in, which basically the state offsets our LCFF allocation by saying, well, you have three point six million property taxes, so we're not sending that out.
That's right. So LCFF is everything, but in here, I do want to break it down to you, how much is each one.
Okay, so, yeah, it could be that our supplemental concentration is also coming out of the property tax offset, but anyway, you got to put it somewhere.
Yes. Basically, LCFF, again, is including the state A, EPA, and property taxes.
Yeah, so it's those first four lines.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Again, I'm assuming we will have the same amount of property taxes coming in. So the estimated LCFF per ADA is eight thousand dollars for fourteen fifteen, nine thousand and one hundred and eighty-three dollars for fifteen sixteen, nine thousand five hundred and fifty-nine, fifty-nine dollars for sixteen seventeen, and nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars for seventeen eighteen. So there is, on the may revised, there was a one time, there will be a one-time discretionary coming in, in the next school year, which for Emory is about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, which is six hundred and one dollars per ADA. And special ed, this is the SALPA transfer money coming in to support the special ed program. So as you can see, fourteen fifteen is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and then in the next three years, I'm projecting pretty well in the same range, which come to three hundred and seventy thousand. So on the last several items on this sheet is talking about the pass-through. So pass-through money is not additional money to the district, it's just coming in and we're going to pay the teachers out. So it's just a pass-through money, it's not additional funding. And on the next several pages, because as you can see, eighty-five to ninety percent of a school district budget is really related to salary account, which is regarding position. So I did run couple pages of position, giving the board the idea, how do I come up with the fifteen sixteen budget, it's based on, I want to go to the first page, where it said, in here is the certificated position, the fifty point six FTE number right there on the first page, under the fifteen sixteen certificated position. So the fifteen sixteen adopted budget is based on fifty point six FTE, teaching position. And then on the page, you will see the staff name, their, the title, and their FTE, and also their funding, the funding source. And then on the fourth page, then it gives you the classified FTE that we base on, which is thirteen point five. So it's doing the same thing, giving you the name of the staff, their title, and also their FTE, and also their funding source. And then on the last page, on here, it gives you the management group, is eleven FTE right here. So these are the position that we based on when we created our multi-year fifteen sixteen budget. And on the way that I, you know, project the sixteen seventeen and also seventeen eighteen, pretty well, I'm using the same FTE. So now I can go back to questions.
Clarifying questions for Doris Sue?
Yes.
Member Maryam?
Thank you very much for that report, Doris Sue. I have a quick question pertaining to the, under the contributions in your slide presentation, and under the ongoing maintenance of, and the minimum requirement of three hundred and six thousand and three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. With the new ECL coming online, invariably, we'll probably have less outlays for, for that building, and I know we have supplemental buildings on here at Ralph Hawley and at, and Anna Yates, which will have a minimum maintenance requirement on there. Do you see any way that if this money's not spent in this capacity, where is that distributed That's my question, is where does the money that's not used for maintenance go?
Can you repeat your question, like, can you repeat it, your question again, sorry?
Just, just for sake of discussion, the three hundred and six thousand dollars that's identified on your contributions, where does that money go if it's not used for, say, maintenance? Because it's, it's a static item, it's not for salaries, it's just for general maintenance. I take this is for capital.
Right now, that three hundred and six thousand, the way that I, pretty well, the easy way to do it is on your multi-year projection, which is on the legal size paper, you added up all the district total expenditures, and then you times the three percent. And that is the minimum you have to contribute to that ongoing maintenance. Right now, if you're asking me what kind of expenditures are going in there, I'm, I can tell you, because of our situation in the custodian salary and fringe benefits, we're no longer charging to general fund, I'm making sure the director of maintenance, instead of charging to the general fund before, is now going into the ongoing maintenance. Because somehow, I have to make sure there are expenses to go into there. And then not only on the salary account, the non-salary account, like the four thousand surprise materials, and services, and consulting services, stuff like that, repairs, stuff like that, most of the time, it been charging to general fund. Again, I will make sure these expenses, instead of going to the general fund, it will go to the ongoing maintenance to meet that three hundred and six thousand.
So the definitions.
There, as far as, is there any money left? That's the reason why I want to make sure I understand your question.
Well, I, I think.
There is no money left, because these are the general fund money that go into the ongoing maintenance.
Can I rephrase Member Miriam's question?
Okay.
I think the question he's asking is, do these become restricted funds that we can only use for ongoing maintenance?
Yes.
Or if we, and that's the answer, so.
Yeah.
If we don't use them, we lose them.
Yes.
Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, other, other questions about the budget?
Oh, did we do public comment?
Uh, no, we're still asking clarifying questions.
Sorry. No clarifying question.
Okay. Yeah, I actually had a question on, on some of the other documents, on the Saks report. I don't know if you have that in front of you. But there are a number of, sort of, the first two pages, conditions we're supposed to say whether we met or not. I'm pulling my Saks report up.
May I ask what page you're looking at?
Yeah, page one and two of the Saks report.
Okay.
So, the criterion standards, they sort of ask, average daily attendance, for example, budgeted ADA has not been overestimated by more than the standard for the prior fiscal year or two, or more, or, or two or more of the previous three fiscal years. And, and you've checked not met.
Oh, this, just to let you know, this.
Same for enrollment?
This page is the certification page. These X that you see on the, on this certification page are marked by the system with the data that we.
Sort of computer generated?
The reason why on the ADA, we are not meeting the criteria is because we are in declining enrollment. So in the, we are always in a lower ADA number compared to the Pi year. And it's been going on more than two years. So that's why, in this case, we're not going to meet that criteria that we are not overestimating our ADA.
Mm-hmm. But I guess, I was just, and a math question, for, for two or more of the previous three fiscal years, haven't we at least been at where we are currently?
On the ADA number?
Yes, yes. We've been higher, I, I thought. So we're not reporting a number that's low, that's an overestimation of where we were over the last two years.
I believe we are, the actual ADA numbers, they are lower than what we estimated during the budget adoption in the Pi years.
Yeah, yeah, during.
But I could look further, give you the exact number. But I believe that is the case.
You mean higher? You mean we, we estimate it higher than our budget adoption?
No, our estimated ADA, the P-two number, ended up a lower than the ADA number that we budgeted in the beginning of the fiscal year, for more than two years.
Okay, but in any event, you're telling me, you didn't, you don't input this X, the computer system does, based on, it's got, hold on, it's got all of our data from prior years, and it, it, it answers the question for you.
Yeah, all these X that you see on the certification page are done by the system itself, and the system look at.
So let me ask, is, what's the implicat, what's the impact? Is the county going to say, gee, you have a lot of not met Xs, so we reject this? Or are they going to say, well, everyone has some not met Xs, and, but you have enough met that this passes? Do you have?
These will not have an impact on the county reviewing our package. Because I think the main concern the county is looking at is actually is our fiscal condition, like whether we will be making the four percent reserve.
Yeah, that's the number one thing they look at.
Or whether we will be having enough available cash to do our operations, that's what they are looking at.
Yeah.
So like for this one, like, on the assumption that we just look at, we base our enrollment at six ninety-five.
Yeah.
And let's say the P-two come in, it's good if we make that six ninety-five, but what happened if we have only six ninety? Then in that case, then what you have, actually have on your P-two is lower than what you now budgeted in the beginning of the year for the new school year. You see, this happened.
Yeah, and, and, and at what point does the county care? They, they're looking, they care when you're not meeting your four percent minimum reserve three years out?
Yeah, because if you're not making your minimum state required four percent, it tells you that you're either in a negative certification, or you are in a qualified, qualified certification.
Yeah, we just went through that.
Yeah.
The, the, is the county going to question our enrollment assumptions to say, well, you're in declining enrollment, so, you know, we're, they might not approve this budget that goes along with our LCAP that lays out our plans because they're, they're worried about the enrollment, or, this is sort of a, yeah, professional judgment question for you, what do you?
I know for a fact, enrollment drives everything, because it affect the ADA, and the ADA drive the income. So they do look at the enrollment, they, they understand that Emory has been in declining enrollment for years. But again, if you have income going down, the job of the school district as a fiscal person, or even the board, is to making sure when you have declining income, at the same time, they will love to see either you're controlling your costs, or you are doing something else to improve your enrollment. So we are not just having this declining enrollment or decreasing income. At the same time, we're just sitting there and not doing anything. Right now, I believe everybody's working on it. Everybody is looking at, you know, ways to improve the curriculum, to attract more kids, and then everybody is working, every program manager at Emory is working to reduce their cost of operations, like control their purchases, all those stuff. And that will help to balance your budget. And once the county can see that you can balance your budget, you can meet your four percent, they will let you to go through your positive certification. Especially right now, for this one that I'm proposing, you can clearly see on the multi-year projection, we are making the four percent reserve.
Yeah, so what I hear from you is you feel comfortable if we were to approve this at our next meeting in its current form, that the county would feel comfortable approving this budget?
Yes.
Okay. Question on the reserve disco, disclosure, which, this is the first year we've had to do this.
This is.
So this is related to the cap on reserves that was enacted into law last year. My, you've explained two item, two, I guess you have three, revolving cash of the things that are in our ending fund balance, reserve facilities MOU three, and city forty-year lease. Is that right?
Okay, I will start answering your question, but probably with the detail will come from Dr. Rubio. This is a new requirement that's starting in fifteen sixteen, that we are, we are required to do a better job in disclosing, not just Emory, it's every school district. If anybody that keeping their ending fund balance beyond their minimum requirement, in our case, it's the four percent, then you need to do a page like this to let the public know what, why you are keeping is on that sheet that I fill out for the certification on the disclosure. I mentioned the three items that listed on your legal size multi-year projection, which is the city lease, the MOU three, and the revolving fund. I think one thing that I did not touch on, on the restricted side, I believe that's what you're saying, the hundred and seventy thousand.
Two thousand four hundred and twenty-five, it shows up every year.
That is the, that is the projected ending fund balance on the restricted program. Yes, I will, I will make sure to put that in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those are categorical, state or federal, that, that?
Those are the categorical program, like Title One, Two, Three.
Yeah, and it's, why, why is it constant, aren't we going to spend it down at some point? But you're just, it's sort of a placeholder for now, till we spend it, it's in our ending fund balance?
That's right.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, I guess if you can add that, that will address that concern. Those were my clarifying questions. If there are more, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Any public comment? None? Okay, any, any further discussion? See, Member Pat's had a.
Yeah, I just, looking at the, the budget outlays and freezing the benefits, I think as we, we look at these things, we have to be aware that not only are the STIRS and PERS costs going up for the district, but they're going up for the, the staff as well. You know, it's going to be on both sides. And so if we're, you know, if, if medical expenses goes up and STIRS goes up, we have to be aware of that as we, we head into negotiations, that they're, they're, much like the district is losing the money, they're, they're losing the funds as well. And so I think it's really critical, we not think of it as just, you know, Governor Brown taking from us, he's taking from everybody. And, and as a member of STIRS, I, I, I'm okay with it because I think we need to increase the contributions. But I also think as we, we go forward with our budgeting, we need to be aware of that, that there's going to be potential pushback or, or more money out of pocket for people living in the area. So just going to throw that out there.
You're right, you're correct.
Good point. Other board member comments, discussion? Okay, so we will see this item again at our next meeting.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Doris Sue.
Thank you, Doris.
So we're skipping item six, which is the, so we took that off the agenda for tonight.
That's correct.
Change order on the swimming pool. You want to introduce the, the final item on our discussion?
Yes, so the item that we now have before us, the purpose is to begin the process for the possible renaming of school district facilities.
Do you want to recap the discussion at the city schools?
Um, I, let's see if I can, if I can give it justice. I believe the idea was that we would start to look at and initiate our process for renaming facilities, so that we could use that process for conversation regarding that, to have that ability to do that.
And through that process, bring in member of the city council and other interested community members, et cetera.
Yeah.
Okay. Member Pat, this is an item you brought forward, do you want to?
Yeah, I think at our last meeting, I talked about, we have an opportunity of a gym opening. The previous item that was pulled, sort of, gives us more time, because things will not be ready on time. But I think we have an opportunity not to rename a facility, but to actually name a new facility. And so I thought that it would be nice, looking at staff, looking at board policy, there's a very explicit procedure we must follow. We were unclear as to whether we could do it ourselves, or if we had to get input from the city council based on the JOA, and the city council, I will say, was, nope, it's your gym, you name it, take care. Glad to see you.
But include us in it.
Well, Member Martinez wants to be on the committee, and I think that's going to, you know, give voice to the council. So I think that's the hope today, is that we can establish a committee, and, you know, I think that's my goal for this evening.
The, the one clarifying question I had was that, it, it seems that the board actually appoints the committee, as opposed to saying, okay, staff, go put together committee. Is it in fact, a citizen advisory committee shall be appointed? I'm assuming that means, and I guess it's, it's also a question, is it the board's desire to read that, to say, bring us names, and we will do the formal appointing? Or we, or are we delegating the authority to, to the staff to put that together? So that's one question, which folks can comment on. And then the other was more of like a, a timing chicken egg thing, is, a school naming committee shall be formed not later than thirty days from the date of board direction. And it seems that that direction comes when the board initiates the process to name a school or facility, school facility. So if the board's appointing, we don't have a, we don't have another board meeting in July to meet that thirty day timeline. I mean, so, is it thirty days from tonight, when we say, let's initiate the process? Or is it thirty days from the time we get names back, and we say, yes, this is the committee, now the process is initiated?
I think I'm reading it the way you first proposed it. We appoint, you create, you give the okay to create the committee, and that's when the thirty days starts.
When we give direction to start appointing the committee. And then, but the committee shall be formed within thirty days of that, which, if that means coming back to us, we're not meeting in July in thirty days, so that, that was my, we can certainly, there can be a special meeting, I might be on vacation, others can do it.
I won't.
You won't be here, you'll be on leave.
I'm also a little confused about number two and the sixty days, because if, if number one is true, then the committee shall complete research and submit for those names is not later than sixty days from their first meet. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I get it, okay, so that's after the committee's formed.
Yeah, we do have.
And they could be formed, and then meet, and figure out. Okay, I'm sorry.
You know, it's, it's not less than, or not more than, sorry, not, as opposed to not less than, so you feel we couldn't get a good pool together in two weeks?
Um, it's going on prior experience, it, it seems ambitious, and that you've got to, you, you not just come up with names, you've got to kind of reach out to people and see if they're willing to do it. And we, we've done, what we've done before, I can tell you, every committee that I've been part of, and it's not a lot, but it's always been an open process, we've submitted applications, see who wants to be on it, and we've also pounded the pavement and called people. And we've also pounded the pavement and called people and, you know, bent some arms, which I think, I think, I think it would be a good idea for such a public thing to at least have a, a public, open process to see who can come in.
Yeah, we would have seven working days before we have to publicize the next agenda. And tomorrow would be a lost day for us based on negotiations, so we'd have six working days. It depends on how much of a, how much you want, want us to outreach or publicize it, I guess, which I think you're referring to.
Yeah, well, well, we're kind of getting into discussion, let me just see if there is any public comment on this item before we further get into discussion. Please, come on up.
You have to go to the.
I know you don't want to, but we want you on camera.
Record it. It's good for the blood.
I would think since you are a school board, and when we're talking about calendar days, I think they'd be school calendar days that, that might be the thirty sixty day thing you're talking about. Because you do go out of session in July, and the kids are obviously out of school and the families are away or whatever they're doing. I would think that that would be the time, that would, that would dictate the thirty sixty because it works that way with the, it works that way with the due process. And it works that way in a lot of ways with, when it comes to a student discipline or student planning and all that. So I would think that it would mirror that as far as your time period goes. That's just my guess, I would, that's my one.
So you're saying a due process, it's sort of put on hold during summer break in terms of the counting of days? And they pick it up again when school starts?
Absolutely, got one going right now.
Okay, well, thank you for that thought and, and way to read this. I'll get back to discussion, number Pat's.
So it, we are talking neither ed code nor state law, we are talking board policy. So we do have a little flexibility there, if we needed to amend board policy, we could do that. But I think, I, I, I heard two things when you were speaking, I, I heard that we, I heard there was a desire to do a lot of outreach, but I also sort of heard that we don't necessarily get a strong candidate pool. We try to put committees together, is that, and that, so I guess that's my clarifying question to you is, are you worried that we won't get enough people or that we will get, we, we will, we won't get, we'll get too many? I'm unclear.
I guess I would have two thoughts, is number one, it's even if we don't, whether we get a lot or little, it's a good idea to have opened it up to the public and invited whoever wants to come in so that we have, we, we've said we've done that, and you, you know, you get interesting people sometimes that, that apply that, that you didn't even know, that are in our community. So I, I think valuing that public process and not seeming like this is a handpicked group that somehow preordained some particular direction is just a good public policy maneuver. So that's the main thing on having a open, public application. The, the reality, you know, I think for this, we could probably, probably, well, it depends how big a committee we want. But if we want fifteen, that could be ambitious, if we want eight, that might be, you know, that might be doable. I don't know if there is a num, I don't think there's a number, just representative groups, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, again, I think, and I'm going to, I think we do have, yeah, I mean, I, I'm, you know, again, the nice thing is the pool is not close to even starting, let alone finishing, which I think will impact the start and open of the gym, so we have time. And I don't know that there's a need to super rush, I tend to be an impatient person, so I, I think we can do it in two weeks, I think we can announce tomorrow the two principals, I, you know, I, I just need a nod from Mr. Ferber, I think he could, you know, send a notice home to parents or a robocall or something pretty easily. You know, I, I would say take an ad out in the local paper, but I'm, as a person doesn't read a paper, period. So I don't know that that's the most effective thing. I think we could get a good pool in, in, in a week of notifications and, and get it agendized, I, I'm realizing we'd have to attach the applications to the agenda, particularly possibly. But actually agendizing the item is pretty straightforward. So I don't know, I mean, I know, you know, I, since I've been kicking this idea around a lot, I definitely think I have a, a fair number of people I know in the community who want to participate. I get the impression that Councilmember Martinez has no problem recruiting people. So, you know, if we need to wait, we can wait, but otherwise I, you know, I feel like, you know, if we put the word out through Mr. Ferber and, and Ms. Lang to the parents, we can, you know, reach the community pretty easily.
So if the, if we initiate the committee and then appoint the committee at the first meeting in August, it's forwarding, and it meets soon thereafter, it's, it's forwarding September, October names to the superintendent. Because it's got to forward them sixty days after the first meeting. That seems like a, to be decided on up to us, but not later than thirty days. So that actually seems like we could, we could make it November first if we wanted to.
Yeah.
Does that?
So, and then my comment on committee size, I think, I think eight's a nice number, but I think if we get, you know, a hundred applicants, going to fifteen or so would not be, you know, I, I, you know, I always want more community participation, not less. And so I, I don't think we need to decide that now. You know, I think the problem with not deciding now, if we have one or two applicants who we may want to, who we feel aren't as committed to the process as we'd like them to be, it'd be difficult to screen them out. So throwing that out there for discussion, started as a comment, but now it's more of a discussion.
I do want to add one thing, and I want to maybe ask Principal Ferber regarding, since the high school has been displaced from Emeryville, is there any special request or any, any special emphasis that we could get from the graduating seniors? Or at least some of the students from the high school to be probably emphasized in this decision? At least that's one small showing of gratitude and, you know, sacrifice that they've made? Is that a possibility? That, or just the high school population in general, just any, any type of reach out to them, a personal reach out to them and say, hey, we'd like to get your contribution in that small of, of, of endeavor.
We have to have a student.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
A future student, which I think doesn't mean someone who's not of school age yet. I think it means someone who's going to be enrolled at the, but I think getting a graduating student as well is, is a good idea.
So, so what timeline are we considering? I'm just looking, I'm just, I missed something that you said in your last comment.
Yeah, so I guess what I was throwing out was not trying to get it on the, the next meeting in June, in June, but our first meeting in August.
Okay.
But let's get out the applications ASAP and so that we have it ready to appoint, review and appoint, the first meeting in August, and then we can get that ASAP committee to start meeting right away. So, so we'll have something by October, middle of October to, to come to us.
So from the first meeting in August, we'd have thirty days to.
Sixty, for them to bring back names. And then once they bring back names, the superintendent, sixty days from their first meeting in August, say they meet August fifteenth.
So I'm sorry, so I just want to clarify, when am I bringing names to the board though, for, for the committee?
For us, say they, they, they bring them by October fifteenth. Oh, for the committee?
Committee, yeah, for the.
On, on the first meeting in August.
Okay, that's what I'm making sure, okay, got it, okay, thank you.
Right. In terms of numbers, maybe, I don't know, we adopt a tentative. What, what we'd like to see, you know?
How many?
Eight, nine, twelve, something, and then if we get fifty, we can, we can expand it at that point, but.
Yeah, I think we're capping at a twelve would be a reasonable number.
Now worried about the evenness of split vote, should we go with an odd number?
Hopefully it'll be consensus.
Yeah, and, and they get thirty-six votes because they have to present three names, so it, it works out. If you're, you know, you can, you're right, yeah, exactly, you know. I have faith in the committee, I haven't met them yet, but I have faith. So.
Mr. Ferber's suggesting.
Naming.
What's, what's the difference in your mind between dedicating and naming?
In that definition, we're talking more dedicating as opposed to selling the naming rights. Yeah, we don't want to go down that path. That was a heated discussion at city schools.
Yeah, I think, well, our bylaws limit us to naming it for geographic area or a person, really, and, yeah, we're talking about a person.
Dead over a year, I believe, right?
Dead over a year.
That was everything, because you know, it's, it's, at this point, if Steph Curry could pull it out, you know, Draymond Green lives in town, so throwing those names out there. Draymond Green, resident, yeah.
He's an Emeryville resident?
He's an Emery, proud Emeryville resident. She's seen him at the grocery store.
Man.
I shop at the wrong grocery store.
Dylan's going to be really excited when I tell him that, I did not know.
Yeah, if you weren't rooting already, there's a reason to. So, and I won't tell you the score this evening. That's why, I didn't say why, I wouldn't tell you the score, sorry.
So this is, this is an action item, and I think the, is there any further discussion? I thought, I think the, the items are twelve or so.
Cap of twelve, with the ability to expand.
Public application, first meeting in, in August.
Can we keep the application pretty simple? Okay.
Let's discuss it.
Sure.
Something like that, but I mean, I think it, you know, it's like a one-page thing that says name, residence. Do they have to be re? What's our criteria for? Parcel tax they do, but I'm not sure they need to be, do we want only residents for this committee?
I would like to limit it to, and again, this is my opinion, I'd like to limit it to residents and/or and, and parents of children in the district.
Okay.
I don't think we want people from, you know, if you're tied to the district in one of those two ways.
What if you're past resident or a past teacher or?
I'd, I'd like you to have, I, my opinion is I'd like to be somebody who's currently either living in the district or has a student in the district. Or owns a business in the, in the community, I think that's a reasonable thing as well.
Works in the district?
Works for the district or works in the district?
In the district. You want them to be an owner?
Yeah, you know what, I, I, I'm indifferent on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know why we're looking at me for this.
I think, you know, we, we can decide if, I, I would say let's open it up, if they're employed in the district, because they have a right to bring their kid to school here, if they do, so, yeah. Works or lives in the district, or what was your, or has a, a student in the district. Is who we're looking for. And then, then it's just like, there might be a line about why do you think you're qualified to serve on this committee, or what's your special? I'm not trying to add something, I'm just trying to ask you, Ms. Tameri, what, what's on the? Yeah, and any particular noteworthy experience or that you, any re, like, maybe that covers it, why you want to be on it? Okay. Maybe you can run it by Mr. Pat's and me, and we'll just sort of, you know, with the superintendent approve the final form, does that, does that work? Member Marion?
Yes.
Okay, do, do we have a?
So moved.
I, I think you might need a, do you want me to summarize the motion? Or do you want to summarize the motion, Mr. Pat's?
Uh, so if, if I can, my memory serves, I, I move that we establish a committee of approximately twelve members based on applica, oh, sorry, we, we start accepting applications for a committee to name the gym with a limit of about twelve members, to people with an interest in the district and to, by, to apply by, do we want them seven days before the first meeting in August?
July thirty-first?
July thirty-first.
It's just the gym?
Yep.
Just the gym?
Just the gym. One thing at a time. Yeah, I think, I think the students have a stake in naming the school. Right, isn't that the whole logo discussion? Or is that just picking the mascot?
That was, that was the mascot for the floor, but, yeah.
I still want a Spartan on the floor, and I still think we as a board could do that, but that's a separate discussion. Have to strip it anyways, might as well put a logo down, then strip it and put a new logo down.
We can do it.
Mr. Ferber's looking at me blankly.
I, I second the motion. Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pat's?
Yes.
President Appleton?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our discussion items. Superintendent, you want to go over the calendar review?
Sure, our next school board meeting will be on Wednesday, June twenty-fourth. However, this week we have coming up on June eleventh, which I believe, is that tomorrow? Correct? June eleventh, we have our athletic banquet at six P M. at the senior center. And I said, that must be just before the senior center is going to be remodeled, I believe, because I think they're going to, they're about to remodel the senior center. We have our fifth grade promotion the following day on June twelfth at nine A M. at Annie Yates'. And then we have our Emery Secondary School graduation on Monday, June fifth at six P M. at the Scottish Rights Hall, Scottish Rights Hall in Oakland. And eighth grade promotion will be on June seventeenth at nine A M., also at the senior center, with the last day for students being June eighteenth.
So, Mr. President, there actually was a change to the calendar.
Oh.
The Annie Yates' promotion I, I've heard is now at the senior center, it's at, the fifth grade is at nine. The eighth grade promotion is at ten.
And that is on?
And that's in, that was change in agenda online, sorry.
On June twelfth?
Yes, yes, same dates.
Okay.
Right. Ten, ten A M. for eighth grade.
Ten A M. for eighth grade?
Right.
Fifth grade at nine A M.
Yes.
Okay, that's the one that's reflected in agenda. I skipped board reports or announcements because it's, doesn't show up when you do the next item on the agenda. Any board reports or announcements?
Just because Mr. Ferber's here and I mentioned it, I don't know if you're aware, but part of the E C C L plan was that the students get to rebrand themselves. I guess this was something that I was not even aware of when looking through things. But it was brought up at city schools, so you're going to have to do a similar process to what we did here about putting a committee together or, or looking forward to that, and I think that's going to be a great experience for the kids. And I, I would encourage you to do it sooner rather than later, because I, I, I want to start seeing school spirit. And so the fact that students get to do it and participate, I think it's a nice win for them. So I don't know the full details, but apparently that was part when the E C C L opens, at least this is what I recall from city schools, that a mascot would be chosen by both the high school and, and elementary school or something, the students.
I, I don't know, was there agreement on that, that? Yeah, I don't think there's necessarily agreement on it, it, it was, it was more of a, we may want to go that route, that's why people didn't want to.
I'm sorry, I thought it was the original plan.
Yeah, i- if it is in the original plan.
That was, yeah.
Maybe, but that's, that's news to me.
It was news to me as well, but that was specifically said by, uh, mem, uh, Councilmember Asher. She said that was, you know, it was originally part of the plan, so.
Yeah, but I, but I think it's a, we should certainly check to see if there's some adopt, but, but, you know, whether it is or isn't, it's, it's an intriguing idea of its own right, so I don't know if you have any.
The, the question is whether, to make sure I understand, the question is whether or not each school site would go through a process to come up with a new mascot, is that correct?
Um, you know, it was just filling them in, I think clearly we need to do more research on it, so I don't think there's any point in laboring it now, let's get back to it. so I don't think there's any point in belaboring it now, let's, let's get back to it.
But we've also, the issue of, of should we rename the high school along the way that, that you have suggested, Emory High School, or some other name is...
The other thing is the, I think, I had the city people over at the school the other day, and they talked about the June four, I think you mentioned it, and what they're gonna put there, cause the elementary has one, the K A has one, and the academy has another. I said, well, we're gonna be having high school basketball games with other schools there, and it's gonna be really, um, you know, a high, it's a high school, but it's gonna be a community thing, why not for a start, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, but I got smacked down, so.
So we... Not at the moment.
Rec one, two, so...
We, we would hope so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, to be continued, but, uh, there was not consensus at the city schools meeting to put a logo at this time on the basketball floor. So, to, to be continued. Okay, I think that, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, I regret even mentioning it, I'm sorry. Yeah, I know.
I'm not sure we, we should, I feel like we just stripped the floor to put a new logo on...